Good evening, everyone. Nice to see you all here. Welcome to the Monday, January 5th, 2020, for meeting. I hope they're already planning on it. We have all, I'm happy to see all my ten board members here. We have the posted meeting agenda. We will, I believe, add one, item two, which is a brief discussion about something we received from the village regarding the proposal of the fairgrounds to add a new entrance in place of the 4-H-L entrance that's there. So I believe you received notification of that. We're just going to tack that on to the end of the agenda. You've received the meeting notes for this evening, Jim's meeting notes. Do you have any comments or questions? There, now can I have a motion to accept the meeting notes?
I saw a move.
Thank you, Edna Seki, please.
Second, Sean.
Thank you, Sean. All those in favor? Posed, extension, motion carries. You have the draft form of the January 16th minutes. Are there any questions, comments, corrections? May I have a motion? Thank you, Sharon. Second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Delise Allas, in favor.
Aye.
Posed, extension, motion carries. I have no correspondence or announcements. Is anyone else wishing to share anything? All right. This evening, we have no new applications, and we have two public hearings scheduled. The first is for Mike's Tree Service, which is resigned second if he leaves the front office as a medical office. At the request of the applicant, we are looking to continue the public hearing until the March 4th meeting. Let me ask, since it is a public hearing, is there anyone here from the public wishing to comment on Mike's Tree Service? If not, could I have a motion to continue the public hearing until the March 4th meeting? Thank you, Edna Seki. I appreciate it. Posed, extension, motion carries. The next public hearing for this evening and this meeting is also the occasion for a special meeting on this application. This is for Rockledge, 192 acre foot road, site plan approval, special use permit, and wetland permit for condo units. No, I do remember you. Let the record show that Edna is accusing herself. Let me start the meeting this evening by welcoming everyone to the special meeting. I appreciate everyone's helping for this evening. I'd like to share and review for a minute the purpose of this special meeting. Many of you have been here.
Can you bring your mic closer?
I'm, I'll do my best, thank you. And remind me, please, I will take it in good spirit. So many of you have been with us throughout the duration of the review to this point. It has been a decade that we have been working at this application in one form or another, and there have been a number of changes through the years. There are new planning board members. I'm sure there may be new neighbors living around the proposed site of this application. And so what we're hoping to do is to re-educate ourselves and re-educate the public about the evolution of this project and how we got to where we are today. Let me go over how we're going to proceed through the evening and what we're going to tackle. We're going to start off the meeting with a presentation from Jim Levy, our planning consultant, who's going to review the history of the planning boards involved in this project. We are then going to turn the meeting over to the Rockledge team, who will review the evolution of the application and the various components of the application from the beginning to the current application. Their presentation will be followed by comments from Edward and Christian Moore of CPL, who are the engineering consultants to the planning board. Wrapping up the presentation this evening will be Jim, who will then be reviewing the next steps to be undertaken by the planning board. Following the presentations, which I must warn you, I expect to take up to two hours for the presentations themselves, I will
Reporting in progress.
I will open up the meeting for comments initially from planning board members, comments and questions from my colleagues here at the table. Following that, I will then open the meeting for comments from members of the public who are here. There is a sign-up sheet there as you came in. If you are interested in speaking, I'm going to ask you to sign in there, so we will take you in order. We're going to be limiting comments to four minutes. If you, that does not mean you can't come back up, but we want to move it along. There may be a lot of comments. If your comment has already been made by somebody else, we're going to ask you to see your place in the line to the next person with new comments. We ask, let's see, we're going to ask you to come to the microphone. We're going to ask you, Gretchen is informing me to make sure that you gave your name and your address, that you speak clearly. We're trying to record the meeting this evening, so as much as we can keep the background noise down, so that we get proper recording and proper documentation of the meeting, we're going to be encouraging you to do that. It goes without saying, I think, that we're all here tonight to listen and to learn and to be respectful of other people's opinions as they're offered. We're not here to engage in a debate. We're simply here to review this project and get a better understanding on the part of everybody. So with that being said, if there's nothing else, I think we can begin the evening, Jim.
Thank you, Valerie. So I want to provide a quick overview of the process of planning boards to answer so far. The applicant will be going through a much more detailed discussion of the specifics, but I just wanted to run through everything for everyone here tonight. So this official started in 2017 when the proposal was accepted for review and secretly a day to see was declared by the town planning board for a two-lot subdivision that included a 12-room country inn, a 20-acre lot, and 28 condos on 116 acres. That included a wetland permit, site plan, and special use permits. In 2018, the proposal was changed to 36 residential units based on the input the town planning board had received. In 2019, the applicant applied to the ZVA for a variance to move units from one of the historic buildings to the other, no density change being proposed, but that ZVA variance, that variance is on the table with the ZVA, but it is still for them. And on May 6th of 2019, the planning board did recommend variance approval for that move. And then sort of related to this, but not exactly, on July 21st, 2021, we did end up holding another special meeting to discuss items that were in the 2021 CPL engineering letter that had been submitted that year. So the proposal under review by the planning board right now is for 28 new units for the RC-5 zoning regulations on approximately 125 acres and eight units in existing historic structures per the adaptive reuse regulations on approximately 10 acres. The adaptive reuse regulations in the code did come about through the town comprehensive plan, which stated that it values the historic preservation through adaptive reuse incentives throughout the town, and that was put into the code in section 12562G, and the zoning code was approved. So the potential that is being looked at in the project that we're looking at tonight on the site includes two parts of the code. The first one is the permission under the RC-5 zoning standards under 12568B that allows for multifamily dwellings. And under that part of the code, you are allowed to have four dwellings for the first five acres of land, and then one additional dwelling for each two and a half acres of water. The historic building's adaptive reuse density is permitted by 12562G, which allows up to four residential dwelling units on the lots proposed for adaptive reuse under a special permit. And the calculations I have in the white box have been something that I just wanted to mention, have been in a memo that I provided for the planning board since July of 2022, just kind of at a high level outlining how the density did come about. When we start with 125 acres of land under the RC-5, and we take out the natural features as is required by code, we end up with about 66 and a half acres. You take five acres for the first four units, that leaves us with about 61 and a half acres, and you take two and a half acres per unit for the other units, and you round down, you get another 24. So a total of 28 units in the RC, 24 units per the RC-5, I'm sorry, 20 units per the RC-5 and eight units per adaptive reuse for a total of 36 units. So the zoning code adaptive reuse unit shift, I just wanted to touch on briefly. The code again states that four dwelling units are allowed in the lots proposed for adaptive reuse. And the proposal before the board right now, that's also before the ZVA, is looking at the fact that as is permitted, four units can go in this about 6600 square foot stone barn, which is that unit located about 175 feet from Agrohook Road, and four units are permitted in a 22,600 square foot manor house, which is the house set further back well into the site, about 1,000 feet from Agrohook Road. The variance proposal is essentially shift two units from the smaller stone barn into the larger manor house. Again, no density change, just a shift of units from one building to the other. And we thought that that was important because when the planning board did their referral review, they did talk about the positive potential impacts that would come from shifting those units from the smaller building to the larger one, part of which is the fact that there would be less potential addition to that stone barn. So the planning board has a number of consultants that have been working for them for quite some time. On behalf of the planning board, CPL, I have two engineers who are sitting here to my left, Edward and Christian Moore. They've been working with CPL. CPL has been working with the town since well before this application was submitted. I don't know how many years they've been working with the town, over 20, some odd years the firm has been engaged with the town, so for quite some time. Grant Lyons, John Lyons, and Kim Garrison, who are in the audience there, have also been working for the town since well before the application was submitted. I don't know John, how many years you've been working with the town.
2011.
Okay, so quite a period. And they're providing legal assistance. I'm providing planning assistance. I've been working for the town since 2018. And then we had Charles Bernbaum, who is a nationally recognized cultural landscape expert, come in in 2019, and did a site visit and provided some other assistance to the town to discuss the specifics of the cultural landscape and the importance of that to the property and to the project. Some of the other typical agency reviews we have when we do a review, and that had been part of this review, are the town's Historic and Archaeological Conservation Advisory Committee, or APAC. They have provided comments on this project. The Town of Rhinebeck Conservation Advisory Board has provided comments on this, and the Dutchess County Department of Health is involved with water and wastewater, and they provide comments as well. So one of the things we wanted to do is kind of outline the work that I've done from the planning side and CPL has done from the engineering side. So I'm going to get into the planning side now, and then CPL will kind of follow up after the applicant comes up and talks to everyone. So I've been here since 2018, and in that time, I provided comments to 37 planning board memos over the years that I've been working here on this project. We reviewed the application for consistency with zoning, subdivision, butts, and special use permit criteria, specifically reviewing the proposed density for consistency with the zoning code. We reviewed the plan for consistency with the comprehensive plan. We have reviewed the traffic study and did ask for input from outside agencies. So we went to the Dutchess County NPO, which is Metropolitan Planning Organization, they do transportation planning in the county. We asked them for input. They actually on their own went out and talked to both the state police and the county police departments, and we got input from them as well through the county NPO. We reviewed onsite circulation plans, as I know CPL has as well, and discussed options with the applicant about best practices for stormwater and other types of water management. Other areas of focus we've looked at from the planning perspective, we have commented on design aspects of the proposal, both of the layout of buildings and the design of the buildings themselves. We reviewed the ZVA proposal on behalf of the planning board for May 2019, referral response that was submitted that I mentioned a little earlier. As needed, we've requested additional information from the applicant, and we've received a lot of information over the years, and we're currently working, this meeting is part of this, on preparing materials for a CBA review to be undertaken by the planning board. So with that, I think I'd like to turn it over to Mark and the applicant to go through their presentation.
Good evening. Seth Stibbe with Mark Krmitzky, P E L S P C, here this evening to represent Hudson Valley Rhinebeck LLC and the Rockledge Adaptive Reuse of Historic Structures and Condominium Project. I'm here this evening with Mark Krmitzky, as well as the owner, Charles, and an entire project team joining us both in person as well as on Zoom. All of them will be introduced to you over time, so I'd like to just get right to it. We've been asked to come here this evening to present both the project as it is proposed today, as well as a timeline of the project since its adoption. Next slide, please, Jim. So Rockledge began in 2012. At that time, like many projects, the project was in a planning stage, so information was being gathered about the physical site boundary as well as the topography, and an initial pre-submission discussion began with the town, both town's people as well as the boards. And at that time, we were also looking into the zoning potential for development of the site. As we moved into 2013, the parcel was formally purchased by ownership, Hudson Valley Rhinebeck LLC. The physical and environmental site features such as wetlands or woodlands, existing car roads, those things were added to the site survey and boundary. The project team began to form, and we developed a green charac, which is a sustainable approach to development, and the intentions of that were for the adaptive reuse of the historic structures, a residential development parcel that would support the historic preservation and restoration of those structures, and the balance of the site for open space and connectivity. The intention was also to look at reuse and improvements for existing infrastructure. Based on that, a very early sketch plan was developed, utilizing mostly existing carts, carriage paths, as well as access points, and just using some of those initial site features. That first sketch plan that was built had a club, as well as a country inn, a banquet venue, a restaurant, and a spa under consideration. Due to the zoning code, the country inn requires 20 acres and is allowed 12 guest rooms. The new vacation home ownership units that were proposed were 49 residential units total, that's all along. So each one of these circles were some initial proposed sightings of those, and there was also reuse of some structures for residential facilities for the spa and for recreation. So this initial meeting brought some of these ideas before the planning board at that time. In 2014, the project had advanced, between 2014 and 2016. So we're still looking at a club, a country inn, and a condominium project. All of the physical sites' features had been developed, so we now have a boundary survey, and all of the environmental features have been included in the map, and the project team started to look at how best to go about developing the site. So at first, a two-lot subdivision was proposed with a net density evaluation for what would be possible on the remainder of the structure. In 2014 and 15, that's this upper right-hand corner picture, that had evolved into 48 total units with one parcel, which was here at five acres for the country inn, and the remainder of the parcel for nine condominium clusters of four units each. That gives us the total of 48. The five-acre lot for the country inn would have required a variance at that time. So the project still needed to evolve a bit. There was maybe a better pathway to go through. So in 2016, it was decided that we would look at a full 20-acre lot, so a boundary was developed for the, what would have been at that time, the club and country inn lot, and then the remainder of the site was reduced slightly in the intensity of the use. So 27 units were proposed, so for a total of 39. So as you can see, as we go through these years, we're starting to look at the intensity of use and reduce the potential impact. In 2016, with a 20-acre lot for the condominium parcel, that would not require a variance, so that was a viable alternative. Knowing that there was a potential viable alternative at this time, started to look into some of the details: water demand forecasting, existing source testing, wastewater treatment plan evaluation. And then also, very important early on, is we started to talk with both the board and internally about operation and ownership of both the wastewater and the water treatment plants. And right away, it was introduced that Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority would be a good solution for the operation, while ownership would maintain and pay for the facilities to be maintained. So also, we took a look at analysis of site locations. Early on in the process, there was an investigation of Primrose Hill and Hagerty Hill Road and potential access from that location. It was determined that that would not be a safe place for an entrance to the site, and that reuse and reconfiguration of the two existing site access points was probably a better alternative. One of the things I'd like to just see is, in the upper right-hand corner, this is early 2014 and 15, you can see that there were two condo unit clusters. This area here is mostly where the existing development is, and this is the manor house, one of the historic structures. So we had unit clusters just to the north of that with a balance of seven additional to the south. As we get into 2016, there's only one of those units now located to the north of the manor house, and the balance now clustered to the south. So we're evolving, kind of looking how we could use the layout of this to improve sort of the benefit of that existing structure. It is a pretty significant structure. So we also took a look at, and we're out with the town, because Agrohook Road is a town road, the town highway superintendent evaluating the site analysis. The north entrance would need some minor reconfiguration for site distance, and it was chosen at that time that the south entrance would become solely an emergency access point. So all of these things were discussed with the board, as well as internally with the project team, and the project began to evolve. So additional meetings and input was done. Next slide, please. As we moved into 2017, the intensity of the use became evident when you started to evaluate a club. So at that time, based on input from the planning board and our evaluation of the intensity of use, it was chosen to remove the club from the project's consideration. In doing that, removing the club, now you had just a country inn one and a condominium project. So Lot 1, which would be here, is for what would be the country inn one, and the balance of the property would be for the condominium project. No club and zoning compliant layout, so it's a viable alternative. We also started to look at existing structures. What structures on this site would be possible to reuse? Obviously, all of the historic structures were important for preservation and restoration, but then there are also a few other structures on the site, and so we started to evaluate, you know, those uses. We started to develop a use table for proposed uses. Additionally, and ongoing, we were still looking at water forecasting and demand source testing, so we started to evaluate some additional wells if they were necessary, as well as look at redevelopment of potentially the existing wells. And then we were also analyzing the wastewater treatment plant, which is located here, and what improvements and upgrades that might require. All of that helped us build analysis for the design infrastructure considerations and rough costs. So we started to develop a roadway for the new clusters, as well as a potential for how to collect all of the wastewater and how to distribute the drinking water. In this scenario, the wastewater collection required pump stations. It's based on the location of the units to the north of the manor house, as well as some of the lower units. So pump stations and lifting equipment, a little bit more cost, a lot more energy intensive. So at that time, it was a viable alternative without the club, and formal application was made to the planning board for what is the minor two-lot subdivision, the site plan special use permit, and the wetland permit application. Next slide, please. So further evolving into 2018, it became evident through the use intensity and also input from the planning board that removal of the country inn was best for the project's consideration. And that brought us to a complete adaptive reuse of all of the existing historic structures and a proposed condominium project, all residential. In this scenario, without the country inn one, it freed up a little bit of area. That area was now used to develop a three-lot subdivision proposal. That first lot is this lot here, that's for the manor house, which will be proposed with four units. The second lot, which is this lot here, is for what is considered the stone barn, and that would also have four units in it at that time. And it did require a large addition at that time to accommodate those four units. Additionally, there were the seven unit clusters, you know, one to the north of the manor house, the remainder and the balance to the south. A viable alternative, it removed the country inn one from the project, and it creates the basis of the project that you see before you today. Also during that 2018 time period, there were initial site visits with the planning board, and site lighting and signage began to be evaluated and introduced, and ongoing is always groundwater exploration based on the change in the use intensity and also evaluation of the sewer treatment. Next slide, please. In 2019, there were just some modifications to that basis of the application. One thing you can notice previously, there was a unit north of the manor house. When these modifications were done in 2019, it was important to cluster all of the proposed seven condominium uses to the south portion and central portion of the site, freeing up space around the manor house to give it a better presentation, and it also eliminated the need for any pump stations, creating an all-gravity sewer collection system, which is always a more desirable, less intense use. So we also started to develop, because this was very viable at this time, concepts for site grading, drainage, road profiles, and any of the other improvements necessary to support the development. So now we have a density shift proposed in 2019 also. The manor house is three times the size of the stone barn, so it made sense that we would look at the two-lot, five-acre lots, but shift some of the units from what would be the stone barn to the manor house. So the manor house is now proposed with a variance required to shift six units there, and the stone barn with a much smaller addition will now support two units. The remainder of the 28 units would be clustered in that, as I mentioned. So we had to modify all of the application materials, all of the plans, to this new approach, which is the approach you see before you today. The zoning board appeals application was submitted and with positive recommendation from the planning board. During this 2019 time, we also did site walks with Charles Bernbaum, the town's planning consultant, or, excuse me, the town's historic landscape consultant, and there were several recommendations made about our proposal. One was that there are small buildings located near one of the historic structures, the carriage house here, and those two, one of the small buildings was built very close to the carriage house, and it was recommended that that be removed. We've adopted that recommendation. The parking in front of the manor house was required, suggested to be The parking in front of the manor house was required to, suggested to be reconfigured and landscaped in so that it presents that building as it should be presented. That was also adopted. And then there's a view shed to the, what is the west of the manor house, and at that time, it was recommended by Charles Burnbaum that that view shed be restored to its historic potential. So from the manor house, you would have views of the Catskills as well as the Hudson Valley. That has also been adopted. Similarly, at that time, we introduced a cultural landscape approach and rationale for native landscaping. That will be discussed later in detail, as well as a request for a pedestrian way along Acker Hook Road, which was investigated and will be discussed later. And always ongoing were groundwater source exploration based on the change in intensity of use and reuse of the sanitary disposal, the wastewater treatment. Next slide, please. So that brings us from the same application from 2019 to the present, into 2020, which is the adaptive reuse and condominium project and consistently ongoing. The ZPA presentation was made and discussed. Unfortunately, the ZPA had to table that because they are dependent on the planning board's lead, you know, lead agency determination and secret process. So we are waiting, ongoing back to the zoning board of appeals. Groundwater exploration was done in 2020 and 2021, where there was testing of the wells onsite and also the effect of those wells on the neighboring properties. That will be discussed later as well. A draft memorandum of understanding was developed with Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority for the operation of the water and wastewater facilities. All detailed engineering plans, now that we had the path forward for the project, were developed in detail. The pedestrian pathway at this time, you know, somewhere in 2020 to 2024 here, was concluded to not be viable, and again, that will be discussed in detail later, so I'm not going to get into that. The cultural landscape and rationale was also discussed with the planning board. There was a special workshop meeting, as discussed, about the CPL comments with the public involved. The public and town were invited to the site, and we did presentations and site walks. There was a meeting with WSP and the Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority onsite to discuss the upgrades that were necessary to all of those plans. WSP also was requested to prepare engineering reports, which have been prepared and submitted for review. And then condominium elevations and footprints were slightly modified, which required us to review again the grading and details for the development and update all of those materials. So formal sign-off from the highway department for the entrance to be used for the ingress and egress and as well as the emergency access. So that was signed off by the highway department and then reviewed with the fire department, also signed off, as well as their ability to serve this area. And at this time, all plans, documents, engineers' reports, along with any other project documentation, have been revised, re-submitted, and finalized to the town's satisfaction. So just bear with me for a little bit longer. Next slide, please. Just going to now go through what are the existing physical site features, as well as the proposed physical site features from Mark and our standpoint, which is land survey and civil engineering. Next slide, please. So the existing site. The existing site is originally a twentieth-century country estate, most recently used as the DAYTOP, which is a substance abuse rehabilitation center with active water distribution as well as sanitary wastewater disposal. The site is one hundred and thirty-five point eight acres in a residential countryside, the RC-5 zoning district. There's a good portion of the project, which is Upland Hardwood Forest, along with some meadows, and then the remainder of the site, you know, a portion of it is the existing development. The site is actually recognized on the National Register of Historic Places, has the Rockledge Historic District. There are five contributing buildings/site features. One, the manor house, which is the gem of the existing facility. The carriage house, which will become a recreational facility. There is the Stone Barn or Chapel, which will be an adaptive reuse with two units. And then there's also the gatehouse, which is the original gatehouse. So those are the four main structures. And then there's two historic water tanks that are also located up on the top of the hill. Other buildings that are on the site that are proposed to remain. The former dormitory, which is a substantial structure, is proposed to remain and will be reused onsite. There are also two wastewater treatment buildings that are located onsite that are proposed to be reused. There are several non-contributing buildings which we will be removing from the site. There are two maintenance structures. I discussed one of those based on Burnbaum's recommendation for removal, as well as another small one. And then there's also a wellhouse, a small wellhouse that's being relocated and redone to meet the needs of the new project. And then there's an infirmary and a small shed that's also going to be removed. Please excuse the double up here, I'm going to skip that one. There are two existing points of access, as I had mentioned, on the west side of Acker Hook Road. The north one will be used for ingress and egress, the south one is emergency access only. This is Acker Hook Road. North is actually in this direction, so this is Acker Hook Road running along the west side of the site. To the south, you have Acker Hook Extension, Primrose Hill, and Hagerty Hill Road as well. Internal road network serves the entire building, so if you were to come in either of these entrances, you would come up to the existing buildings and you'd round it around via carriage paths or a road network through that entire area. It's the intention to reuse those. Within what's the wood line of this entire development, which I would say is kind of the developed area of the site, it's about twenty-six acres. And in that twenty-six acres, there's three point six acres of impervious cover. That's buildings, roadways, sidewalks, or any other hard surface area. The existing water supply wells and as well as a distribution network in this area, and the sanitary collection, which runs to this building and is discharged through here, will be reused. Next slide, please. And under proposed conditions, the project is proposing, as I had mentioned, a three-lot subdivision. One five-acre plus-or-minus parcel for the manor house's adaptive reuse, one five-acre parcel for the Stone Barn's adaptive reuse, and the balance of the site for the condominium parcels. So the adaptive reuse units, as I mentioned, will be shifted with six and two, for a total of eight. The new construction is seven condominium clusters with four units each, for a total of twenty-eight, for the thirty-six allowable units on the site. Other site buildings, new or to remain, so that former dormitory is proposed to remain as a homeowner's garden, as well as homeowner's storage, and the two wastewater treatment buildings will remain with some improvements. That new wellhouse is going to be located right here, as well as two storage tanks that are underground for the water distribution. There will be minor ACOE and town wetland and adjacent area disturbance. The existing access points actually go through some wetland areas. In improving those with actual drainage, we will be disturbing just a small amount of those, that wetland here, as well as with improvements to drainage and landscaping, will be disturbing a small portion of this, this wetland area. Reuse of the two existing access points I've mentioned several times, but one will just be homeowner access, the other emergency. This will be closed off, and it will be chained with a universal key for the fire department, should they, or any other emergency personnel, should they need to get it. So when we look at what is the kind of balance of all of the new wood line here and what is the developed area, it's about thirty-four acres. So that's in addition of about eight acres of disturbance through this entire area and a total of seven point three acres of impervious, which is an increase of about three point seven acres is all that's required of hard surface area to accommodate these seven condominium units. Stormwater management was designed to provide treatment for both the existing and proposed development. The majority of the proposed development is here, existing here. However, all of this existing development was just runoff from the roadways. There was no curving and no collection system or direction to stormwater treatment areas. So we're proposing to do that, to improve this, to have stormwater treatment, as well as do the necessary stormwater treatment for the proposed section of development. Utilizing green infrastructure techniques, as well as seven ponds, we're providing the water quality and quantity improvements that are required. It is the intention to also reuse with improvements the onsite water supply and wastewater treatment systems. A lot of that will be discussed in further detail by the remainder of the consultants.
Thank you, Scott.
All right, Scott, let's try again.
Good evening, my name is Scott Dutton. Can you hear me clearly?
That's all.
Okay. I think I need to go to the next slide. We'll leave this up here while I introduce our team of architectural and adaptive reuse consultants. My name is Scott Dutton, I'm principal of Dutton Architecture. Been practicing here in the Hudson Valley for twenty-five years. We have a specialty in our office of working on adaptive reuse projects. I joined the project team in 2016 to collaborate with Bob and Gloria Fox and support our client, Charles Lakeman, who I've been working with since 2018. Of note, I've worked with Cindy Hamilton, who you'll meet shortly, of Heritage Consulting, on a number of adaptive reuse projects that went through the New York State Chevy and National Park Service Tax Credit Program, which is a very rigorous program. We've been successful for Charles Lakeman, most recently on a four-site project, Booty Hotel in Kingston, New York, which you may know as the Kingsley Hotel. We've also worked together on the former St. Joseph's School, which is being listed on the National Register of Historic Places for Charles. Our firm is in our fourth year as the architects for Molon Mountain House. We just racked up our twentieth project for them in four years. Bob Fox and Gloria Fox are up next, followed by Cindy Hamilton, who's going to talk about the new construction work here. I think that Seth did a very clear job of describing the buildings and what the proposed uses are, but don't want to burden the board and the public with too much time here. I'll hand it off to Bob. Who's in the audience?
I guess it's just as well to start with this slide. It was mentioned before, there was a third unit to the north of the manor house. This unit to the north of the manor house, which we couldn't fit in with the right drainage and water, so we shifted all the, built all the units to this side of the cluster. It's probably best just to go to the next slide, which shows a typical unit. We started with a unit that's that in size, which was roughly twenty by fifty, and we figured that we'd take that typical unit and put those, put that unit together with other units of similar sizes would actually solve the problem and solve the, getting the units on the site. This is one unit called the chef's unit. This is another unit here, third unit here, and this is part of that unit, and this is the fourth unit. I don't, I don't think you want me to go through the plans at this point. No. Okay. Okay. So the next, next slide is... This is the second floor of the units. This is a two-story unit with a roof over part of the unit. This is, this is an upper story unit, that unit with bedrooms on this side, third unit with staircase, and a fourth unit over here. I will say that I actually started this project day one. When Charlie Lakeman, when he came to, came to our office, I was working in New York City at that time, and he said, "I have this funny site, you could work on it for me." And we started with all kinds of designs and houses and everything, and it made a lot of sense what we were doing. It didn't conform all to the codes. It just looked, it looked good, it didn't conform at all. And that was 2012, something like that. Fortunately, the project shifted a little bit and came back to, to rein back for us. I was able to get my wife, as a project designer, working with me, and we came up with these units. Next slide. This shows the units from a distance. The problem is that with these units close to each other, you can't have the windows from one unit looking into the other unit. So that became a very critical part of why there are no windows in this part, and as you go around with the units, you can see there aren't. The location of windows is very important in this project. Next one. This is another image. This is a garage unit. The garage unit is designed to have a device within the unit that will accept the car on the device, lift it up, and you can park a second car under it. So the garages are all spaced for two cars, but basically they look like one-car garage. Next slide. This is the, this is a typical unit. You can see that there are no windows on this side because that would mean that these people with these windows would be looking into the other unit. Next slide. I'm done. Thank you.
Good evening, can you hear me?
No.
I'm just encouraging everybody to speak up. Okay, can you hear me okay now? Okay. Well, it's a pleasure to be here this evening. My name is Cindy Hamilton, and I'm the president of Heritage Consulting Group. As Scott Dutton mentioned, we're the historic preservation consultants on the project, and we've been working with the project team since 2016. We're a national historic preservation consulting firm, and we work with owners and developers around the country to restore and preserve historic buildings and sites. And, you know, looking at some of our projects, shows the range and breadth of our projects. Next slide. Just to hit some of the highlights of the history of Rockledge, and some of you already know a lot about the history of Rockledge. Rockledge was constructed around 1906 in the country seat for William Starr Miller, who was a wealthy industrialist and very socially prominent New York City resident. The architects of Rockledge were Warren and Wetmore, a firm that many of you know. They were a New York City-based firm. They were really known for their design of clubs and hotels and office buildings, and they also designed... they also designed a number of private estates. And Rockledge estate really reflects the trend of wealthy New York City families constructing country seats in Rhinebeck and the surrounding area. Next slide, please. As was mentioned earlier, Rockledge is listed in the National Register of Historic Places and was actually listed back in 1989, so 35 years ago now. And the nomination asserts that this property is a distinctive example of early 20th-century country estate architecture. The nomination also cites this as an intact and representative example of Italian Renaissance style architecture. So Rockledge has long been recognized for its architectural value and historical association. Next slide, please. So our firm was retained to work with the project team to ensure that the proposed work is sensitively undertaken to ensure that the character of the property and its buildings is preserved. The State Historic Preservation Office, or SHPO, has visited the site, toured the buildings, and they've acknowledged their support for this project. As a historic tax credit project, the full scope of work, all site work, all exterior work, and all interior work, will be fully reviewed by SHPO and the National Park Service. Next slide, please. When we started on this project, the historic property was an estate of abandonment and disrepair, and this is a terrific opportunity to retain and preserve this very important collection of country estate buildings under the Secretary of the Interior standards, so that they are not lost. And thank you for the opportunity to be here with you this evening.
Good evening, I'm Kathleen Baywell, can you hear me okay? Okay. I didn't hear it back.
Yes.
Yes. I'm the landscape architect for Rockledge, and have been working with the team since 2017 to advance and coordinate... Oh, I forgot to plug the landscape design. You come to the next slide. This has ranged from broad stroke, statewide considerations to a more detailed level for selected areas. This is a summary of my involvement, which Seth has uncovered in the introduction. I'll take you through the main aspects of this work. Next slide, please. The overall landscape approach involves two main areas, the historical, cultural, visual legacy, and the natural resources and ecological systems. For both, the aim is to preserve, protect, and enhance these features for the entire site with particular attention to the areas within or adjacent to development. From the landscape approach for the natural resources, we rely heavily on the 148-page Habitat Assessment Report, and it is a highly detailed description of, that provides us with a very deep understanding of the site's flora and fauna, the ecological communities, and patterns. At this particular stage, the report was, and story made, an essential guide for answering such questions as, what is here, what is the nature of the place, what are we starting with, and what will nature permit us to do or help us to do? Next slide, please. This leads to a closer look at some focus areas, starting with the residences. Each are also the most public face of Rockledge. The main concerns here were respecting the existing ecological and hydrological patterns, as well as creating a landscape that harmonizes with Rhinebeck's unique character. These are some initial concepts that we worked on, and I'll show you some examples later on. Next slide, please. Around set time, it's fair to develop concepts for the residences, involving minimizing the regable of vegetation and bringing the native landscape towards the buildings. The proposed plantings consist of diversity of ground covers, maprasses, coriander, strops, and trees. There are no turf lawns at the residences or anywhere else on the site. However, it will be impossible to achieve a lawn effect by selectively mowing grass and affording the plantings from time to time. The second point about the residential landscape is we try to create a place that meets as a cohesive whole, equals with its surroundings, and while at the same time having a finer grain closer to the communities, where we can manipulate the vegetation to create more privacy and identity. Next slide, please. Here is our representative plant palette. Proposed species are all derived from the Habitat Assessment Report, as well as best practices for creating native landscape, native plant communities that further augment existing biodiversity. All known to be well adapted to site conditions and therefore not dependent on inputs such as irrigation, fertilizers, pesticides, herbicides, and maintenance routines such as regular mowing, weed lapping, and pruning. Our ready irrigation is not part of the landscape plan at the residences or anywhere else. We will however need some temporary irrigation for establishing plantings, and we expect this to occur over one to two seasons. By omitting permanent irrigation, we are mitigating risk in terms of future weather fluctuations. The plants will develop ever stronger root systems if they are not propped up by irrigation, and thus will be more resilient to drought conditions. On the left side of the slide, you see some planted plants in selected areas adjacent to or within development, all consisting of layers of native state of plantings designed to plan with the adjacent woodlands, and in some cases, such as the water tree on plant, provide visual screening. Next slide, please. So here is a further refinement of the landscape around the residential areas. It shows again woodland edge, it's a layered woodland edge, again getting all the old plants. And then up closer to the community, it's opportunities for small garden spaces that can be modified by the owners. And then on the right-hand side, the slide, the image at the top is the door entrance, which is the primary entrance as mentioned. And it's a little bit more formal with rows of trees lining both sides of the drive. These are oak trees. And then again showing the plant palette and some patterns of hydrology and just the overall ecology. Next slide, please. As mentioned earlier, our approach is to preserve, preserving and retaining the original 20th century design that still exists, the character of the pottery we've used, woodlands, open areas, and overall picturesque character. This will, this all helps to inform our proposed landscape treatments. Now Seth has already told you a little bit about the visit we had with Charles Bernbaum, the landscape historian and founder of the Cultural Landscape Foundation, and this is just illustrating those three main areas that he recommended that we address in our landscape plan. Let's go to the next slide. I wanted to give brief background on the decision to open up the Be Looking West. In the 19th and early 20th centuries, as I already, Cindy was talking about this, wealthy people built estates along the Hudson River, taking advantage of the country settings and the captive views of the river mountains. Many of these estates feature vast and formal lawns as elements of the transmatte, the prevailing landscape design of the era. The key feature was the intentional manipulation of the groundlaying, vegetation, and other elements to compose pleasing, naturalistic design. Next slide, please. So here for Rockledge Manor, it's also cited to take advantage of these same extraordinary western views, though in recent years, they have been obscured by the approaching woodlands. We are restoring that view. However, we are not continuing that to different areas or creating, to create the view or doing any clear cutting of vegetation. Instead, we are thinning out some of the urban canopy to help reveal the view, filtered through some of the branches and framed by the woodland edge above. And then screening between the Manor House and down so residences remain intact. Also, just another thing to mention is, this is a more selective and environmentally sensitive opening of a view than would have been done in the 19th century, and all cuttings will be left to decompose in place. Next slide, please. There was a request by the town to introduce a pedestrian way on the site along Akron Hook Road, which we studied in 2019. And for most of the length of the proposed way, we can create a safe trail on the site away from the urban. However, we ran into a major impediment at a steep slope near the water tree on plant, which is outlined in the red rectangle. Because of the slope, the pedestrian path must move to the road shoulder, which you can see illustrated in the upper right section, cross-section. This area is a pinch point at a line curve, and it's not allowed adequate sightlines for pedestrians or vehicles, nor does it permit vehicles to safely pass without traveling into the pedestrian way. This is particularly dangerous for those walking in the southward direction, which in the plan below is going from right to left, because they would be facing away from the approaching vehicles. So we have concluded it is not safe to install a pedestrian way. And then the final slide, please. The site lining would be as minimal as possible, both in fixture design and illumination. The fixture on the left is the fixture at the top of the pole, and on the right, this is a building mounted downlight. And in addition, all site lining is 110 duck sky compliant. And that's my last slide. Thank you.
My name is Mike Shorter. I'm an engineer with WSP and the Sheldon Connect Co., and I will be presenting on the water supply system. Next slide, please. Well, I thought I'd start off with identifying the current status. We did develop plans and specifications for the water supply and treatment system and submitted them to the Dutch County Department of Health, and we are in the process of responding to comments. But originally, the project started off with identification of sources of supply, the water supply for the proposed development. And the way in manner in which we did that was we conducted a 72-hour yield test on three water supply wells, which is a New York State Department of Health-driven process, and it's of three bedrock water supply wells, well one, well two, and well three, and you can see the respective... Yeah, I can go if you want to advance the slides a little bit more.
Mike, you're back?
I didn't back, I'm sorry.
Don't worry.
Look, we had a little problem with the water. So I'm sorry about that, everyone.
So Mike, can you start from where you were, like we talked about the dogs?
The...
Guess what? You have another problem.
Pardon me?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask if you could get back up a little, just because we did miss a couple of your points, that's all.
Should I continue?
You're not breaking up, it's not working.
Okay, I'll back up. We did the 72-hour yield test on three bedrock water supply wells that I have identified there, well one, well two, and well three, and you can see the respective yields for each of those wells. And what the New York State Department of Health requires is that we meet the maximum daily demand with the best well out of service, or in this case, we take well three out of the equation and establish whether or not we can meet the maximum daily demand to remaining wells. And with wells one and two, we're able to pump a little under 30 gallons a minute or 40,000 gallons per day. But we exceed the maximum daily demand, and we therefore meet the requirements set by the New York State Department of Health. As part of the 72-hour yield test that was conducted, we monitored several off-site homeowner properties for the private wells, and what we do for that is we put water level monitoring equipment in the well to determine if there is any impact from our concrete wells and the off-site wells. So we monitored a total of 11 off-site residential wells, and there were no discernible impacts or drawdown in the off-site monitoring program. So what in essence does not have an impact on water supply for the neighborhood properties. Next slide, please. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. And next slide, please.
Did it bounce?
There we go. Now, I'm sorry about that. Okay. As part of the 72-hour yield test, we also have to collect a full New York State Archive Water Quality Analysis, which involves 40 parameters, and again, with any new water supply well, it's what the New York State DOH requires. And the laboratory, her results indicated that there weren't enough parameters that were searched. We did find hardness in well two that was a little higher than what we'd like, and we're addressing that. And as you can see in the next section, the water treatment section, we're including water softening for well two, we're including chlorination of the water supply for all of the wells, and we're also adding a chemical erosion control to offset any corrosive effect of the water supply. Now, the water supply and distribution system are going to consist of the three bedrock water supply wells, two 10,000 gallon atmospheric storage tanks, three root pressureization distribution transfer pumps, and the distribution system is going to be comprised of a six-inch high-density polyethylene water supply pipe. And that concludes my presentation.
Hello, everyone. So my name is Aaron Sylvia, Assistant Vice President of WSP, also Task Leader for the wastewater portion of this project. Next slide, please. So the first portion of the wastewater system that we were charged with designing is a collection system. Collection system for this project encompasses approximately 3,500 millimeter feet of new eight-inch gravity sanitary sewer. It's proposed to be designed using SBR 35 PVC pipe. There's also numerous manholes, as you can see in the snip there, every one of those beds, there's a manhole, tough to see at this scale, however. Also, from all of the residences, we'll have new six-inch laterals going to this main trunk line. We also attempted to reuse the existing collection system to the maximum extent possible. We actually CCTV inspected that existing line, performed a capacity analysis for it to make sure it was sized properly, and ultimately, we were able to use a pretty good chunk of it, or on the right-hand side of that figure there, outside of one section that we had to replace due to partial collapse of the pipe in that location. outside of one section that we had to replace due to partial collapse of the pipe in that location. So the project includes fixing that piece and, of course, all of the new collection system that you see there. Next slide, please. Another aspect of the design, of course, is the wastewater treatment system. There's an existing wastewater treatment plant on the site. You can see in a photo, or the figure there, rather, that's the main treatment building. And as you can note it here, that the original design flow of the wastewater treatment plant was 27,500 gallons per day. That's actually decreasing with the new development to 12,238 gallons per day. So, you know, there's the figure of the existing system, and we are upgrading numerous aspects of that. It's an RBC system, and that piece was actually functional and still usable. So we aren't really upgrading the RBC itself, but many of the other aspects, to include replacement of the commonuter, replacement of the UV disinfection system, replacement of the aeration blowers and aeration diffusers within the aeration basin and also in the sludge holding tank. We are also updating the sand filter with the new cloth media filters. And also, there was an existing cover over the top of the existing aeration and sludge tanks. It's timber and FRP cover, if you will, for lack of a better word. And it was pretty dilapidated when we got out there. So we are going to replace that with a new timber structure over those tanks. And also, we plan to drain and clean and epoxy coat those concrete tanks, adding new life to them, bringing them back up to speed. The existing plant does have an emergency generator. We're going to get that serviced and bring that back online to bring back some useful life to that generator. Also, bringing the lighting and electrical up to code compliance, modern-day code compliance for those items. A couple of other items to note on the treatment plant itself, there's no modification to the existing discharge line and outfall from the plant, and also no modification to the footprint of the plant itself. It's really just updates inside the building and inside the tanks that are located outside of the building. Next slide, please. So this slide kind of outlines some potential concerns that we've seen in current public comment. It looks like there were a number of questions, comments on the outfall and discharge. As I mentioned previously, there's actually no modification at all at this time to the discharge and outfall to Fallsburg Creek. Fallsburg Creek is identified as an intermittent stream. There was some question on if that is normal. And the answer there is yes, it is typical to discharge treatment plants of this size to intermittent streams. Of course, the effluent limits that are being discharged are dictated by the New York State DEC and the current requirements there. We did look briefly into subsurface discharge. Not feasible due to the existing soil conditions at this site. The effluent discharge will be required permanent effluent limits and ultimately be monitored and reported by the wastewater treatment plant operator. The operator is proposed to be the Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority. We have an MOU, or Memorial Understanding, with them. And once complete, they will take over the treatment plant and own it and run it from there on filtered. Some other questions came about due to flooding at the treatment plant. The plant itself is largely located inside the building. As we already discussed, as well, the exterior tanks are raised above the existing grade, approximately two feet of freeboard, I'd say. Also, the National Flood Hazard Database identifies the plant as low risk for flooding. And as far as we can tell, after we looked into the records, there's been no patch reports of flooding at the wastewater treatment plant. So that should be a concern there at this time. There was also some mentions of odors at the plant. Historical odor issues were reported due to grease from the existing gate top villa facility. You know, I guess they had some pretty expensive kitchens and food service. Typically, nowadays, something like that would have its own grease trap, but I guess back then they didn't. So all of that grease is making its way down to the wastewater treatment plant and ultimately producing odors. The proposed condominium development does not have a food production service. Therefore, debris should not be an issue. Further, the aeration tanks and the sludge tanks where that grease would end up is being covered by the new timber frame cover that I did previously discuss. The final item I'd like to discuss today is permitting. There's a question about what is required here. Ultimately, it's a speediest permit with the New York State DEC as well as the Dutchess County Department of Health HE1 application, both of which have been submitted at this time. And we are currently awaiting responses from those permitting agencies. And that concludes the wastewater portion of the presentation.
Good evening. My name's Sean Kemp. I'm an attorney with Marvin Kemp &amp; Co., a local law firm. I don't have too much to add regarding the project from a substantive perspective, but I just wanted to take the opportunity to introduce myself to those of you that might not be familiar with you, with me, and let you know that I'm going to be part of the Rockledge team moving forward. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Mark Sargent, Great Manning. I'm not able to unpainture on my video, so.
Oh, that's all right, Mike, we'll just move forward.
Yeah, I'm not sure why I can't get it to go on. Anyway, pleasure to see you in the overview of the traffic engineering studies that are completed with the project. Next slide, please. We completed the original traffic study and a number of updates as the project development plan was refined and evolved over time, beginning with the first traffic study that was completed in April of 2018. And at that time, it was consisted of 28 units of 12-room country. And it was primarily envisioned as a recreational development at that time. So the traffic study focused on Friday peak hour time period when people would be arriving to the area for a weekend at the recreational type of facility. All of the traffic studies that we did over time were completed using standard traffic engineering practices, which is basically get a handle on existing condition roadway geometry, volumes, speeds, crashes, and things of that nature. And what we found in the existing conditions assessment is that, as you know, the area and the local roads that provide access are low-volume local roads. Travel lanes are generally nine to 10 feet wide, depending on the location. We studied intersections and segments along Parkview Hill Road, Perrose Hill Road, Acre Hook Road, found no discernible crash pattern. There were nine crashes over the three-year period studied, and four of them involved animal collisions. Three of them were fixed object and two were other. One of the measures used in the state of traffic engineering study is level of service. It's a measure of delay. All levels of service today or under existing conditions are very good. Rated a level of service A or B. And as you can imagine, delay is really not an issue in this focus study area. The site at that time was projected to generate 36 new peak hour trips. And with that additional traffic on the road system, there would be no change in level of service at many of the intersections. There would be negligible changes in delay on the order of fractions of a second. So really, no impact from a conventional traffic engineering standpoint. This has been discussed, but the traffic study did look at site access, recommended realigning that normally site driveway, establishing it as the primary entrance. There is good site distance at that location, so motorists will be able to get in and out safely. We also recognize that a standard traffic engineering study may not necessarily address some of the concerns that residents have due to increased traffic volume in the area, which may not produce a level of service change or impact. However, increased traffic in and of itself could be a concern. So we did some investigations and determined that this community assessment was an appropriate measure to evaluate just the sheer increase in traffic on the local roads in the area. It was based on a document called How Much Traffic Is Too Much Traffic? It rates area roadways for residential quality of life or environment based on the total daily volume on the roadway. Roadways with 0 to 300 cars per day are considered excellent by this one measure. 300 to 600 cars per day would be in the good range. 600 to 1,200 would be acceptable range. And above 1,200 would be in the poor range. This is just one micro measure. And what we found is, as I mentioned, volumes on the local roads are low today. They generally are in the 200 to 450 vehicles per day range. So area roadways would currently be rated excellent to good. With the relatively small increases in traffic from the project, those ratings would range from excellent to acceptable. It was actually only the section of Perrose Hill Road east of Acre Hook Road that saw a change in its rating going from good to acceptable. And that was back in 2018. As the project evolved and refined in November of 2018, the country end was removed, and the project consisted of 36 recreational units. There was really no change in the level of service. As you can imagine, there were only four additional trips in the previous assessment and no change in the community assessment. In February of 2019, the proposal was revised again. And so it was a traffic study to reflect more traditional units, not necessarily recreational units that would see a peak on Friday. These would see more recurring types of trips on a typical weekday, Monday through Friday, consistent with any presidential development. And under that scenario, the peak hour trip generation actually is reduced. So there would be, the projection was 24 new trips during the DMB now, which would be the highest seen in time period on a typical weekday. And that traffic would immediately dissipate in the driveway as some goes north and south and then on the network. So there would be one car every two minutes on the driveway and less than that on the area roadways. We continued to see a negligible change in level of service. And in fact, with the reduced trips, the community assessment returned to an excellent, to good rating consistent with existing conditions. In 2021, we responded to a number of comments, including new traffic counts since the original study had taken place. We found that traffic volumes had actually decreased slightly, which was a common trend during the pandemic. And some of the speeds on area roadways had increased slightly, which again was consistent with pandemic traffic trends across the board. We also responded to comments about speeds and roadway characteristics. And what this got into was there was a specific comment about the ability of these local roads to accommodate any increased traffic. And at all, like. And so the resource that we used in that assessment was a publication called Low Volume Roads by ASHTO, which is the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials. And ASHTO classifies any roadway with less than 2,000 cars per day as a low-volume road. And as I already mentioned, the local roads around the post-site are quite a bit lower than that. They range from 200 to 450 vehicles per day. With development of the site, they'll increase nominally to 200 to about a little over 550 vehicles per day. So they're still well below the ASHTO low-volume threshold. And according to ASHTO, even though a road may be at nine or 10-foot travel lanes and have the characteristics of some of these roads, if it's a low-volume road, widths and clear zones can remain and need not be modified unless there is evidence of a site-specific crash pattern. And what we found is there is no evidence of a site-specific crash pattern on the area roadways. There is handful of unrelated fixed object and animal collisions and two other crashes, no patterns. So by conventional traffic engineering measures, there's no significant adverse impact. And by this community assessment measure, similarly, there's no significant adverse from a traffic standpoint. Next slide, please. So what we've done here is we've prepared a chart with this community assessment evaluation into a graphic so you can visualize the changes in traffic as compared to this criteria about how much traffic is too much traffic. And in the middle, you can see the chart color-coded, ranging from excellent at the bottom to good, acceptable, and poor with those volume thresholds that I mentioned earlier. Excellent extending up to 300 cars per day, good to 600, acceptable to 1,200. Poor is anything above 1,200. We capped the graph at 2,000 because of the ASHTO criteria for low-volume roads. On the left, you can see the range of existing daily volumes on the local roads study. And I mentioned they range from about 200 to 450 cars per day, which is very low from a transportation state level. And on the right-hand side, you can see the change or the future range after the site is developed. So the projection is that the volumes on area roads will increase. Development like this will see some additional traffic. But traffic volumes on the area roads will remain in that good to excellent range according to this one criteria. And you can see the volume range there generally from about 200 to 570 vehicles per day. So again, according to this kind of unique measure, which tries to capture the quality of life in the area of residents, we see some increased traffic on area roadways. There's no change in these conditions. And the area will still be good to excellent from a traffic standpoint and relatively low cost of traffic. That summarizes the traffic engineering study.
Good evening. I'm Matthew Bruca. I've prepared the full environmental assessment package. And of course, all the presentations, all the presentations that you heard this evening are parts of that FFAF. And all of them go into talking about what the environmental impacts are and how the changes in the project have sort of addressed that. What I'd like to do right now is just summarize a couple of key points made by some others and then just make some conclusionary comments. What was interesting to us was that when the timeline was presented by Jim and by Seth, each project iteration resulted in a reduction of environmental impacts. And that's really a good plan, a good environmental plan. And so a couple of those things are Mark just mentioned. As the uses got changed, the amount of traffic got changed. And I always feel very positive because it's a very manageable amount of traffic for the road as described. Additionally, describe how the development all moved to the open metal, towards the southern end of the project. southern end of the project and the manor house. Well, what that did is it took all of the development away from the northern portion of the site, which is where the sensitive environmental resources were, repairing water horse, button bush pool, and other features like that. And all the development was moved away from that area, so there's really no impact at all on those features. The Charles burn bound changes were discussed, were incorporated into the plan, and very important in terms of the views and the park in front of the manor house and those issues that really add to the cultural importance of the project and a part of the adaptive reuse of the entire project. Also, when the project moved all the development to the southern portion of the site around the meadow, it did have an impact on hardwood forest, with about a hundred acres of hardwood forest. But what occurred is that all the development around the outside of the meadow was really at the very edge of the forest in that location. And it's always known that when you have large stands of forest, it's the very edges that really contain usually the least biodiversity. And so the portions of hardwood forest that we're impacting to build those portions of the development also were reduced, which is very much beneficial impact. If you can move to the next slide, that would be good. Thank you, Jim. There's been a review of the parcelization, and about the twenty-eight units around the main parcel, those with the attached units, and the two smaller, less subdivisioned. And the point about that was the change that occurred with regard to using those adaptive reuse units, of course, reduced the overall number of units on all project, but they also created the opportunity for the variance, which has been discussed. And that's of very, very major significance because the addition that was going to be proposed and which would have complied with the zoning ordinance, really would have been a significant impact on active growth, because it would have been a substantial building that would have just really changed the ambiance of that section of the road. And it would have added a very new feature to it. Instead, the units are now, of course, about a thousand feet away from the road. So that was a very important part of the change and a reduction of environmental impacts as well. Jim, if you would, the next slide. There's been discussion of the adaptive reuse, but I want to reiterate a particular aspect of that. There is no doubt about the sophistication of the town of Rhinebeck dealing with these historic resources, in terms of the Hudson River, in terms of the specific district that Rockledge is part of, in terms of all of the environmental and historic aspects of the town. The foresight that was displayed during the campaign to a planning process and in the long zoning order integration process that created the adaptive reuse provisions showed amazing foresight, because it really was the ability to get that additional density of the four units on a five-acre parcel for adaptive reuse of historic building and of the multifamily density that would have been committed, really is what enabled the significant capital investment in the restoration of those historic properties. And they are really going to be, I don't know if they're going to be a pearl in Rhinebeck's historic crown, but they certainly are going to be a major feature in that. And that really was made possible by the foresight of the people that put together that zoning ordinance. And it's a notable occurrence, and I just wanted to make that point for the public record. Also on this slide is the, which has already been gone through, is the categorization of all the existing buildings and how they're being reused, that Jim went through, and identified which of the buildings will be temporarily used and then demolished. And the next slide. Kathleen Bakewell, the landscape consultant, discussed the extensive resource studies that were done. They were so extensive, they really had no comments, because they were really completely addressed in a very detailed way. All of the resources are being avoided, and that was just another aspect of the project that really makes this project the, sort of the way of planning of important projects in an environmental sense of way to occur. And so a real sort of thank you to the board for allowing that to evolve, and also for the owner in allowing to take the time to make those changes and have the benefits of that occurrence. So the next slide is the wetland disturbance. And each of the wetlands that were described and surveyed and the certifications, the wetland affiliations approved numerous times by the federal and state agencies, which occurred, established the importance of the wetlands in a couple of ways. And the disturbance, the only disturbance really of the wetlands are the disturbances that occurred at the entryways to improve one drainage, two, the aesthetics, but three, also safety. And so it was really those changes at the intersections, which were the best engineering solution for the ingress and ingress and emergency ingress and ingress. And it enabled two very safe and what's going to be very beautiful intersections, which are going to be really fitting, which are really going to be fitting into the existing character of the neighborhood to the greatest extent feasible. The next slide, please. This just identifies, and if there are any questions, but this is in the package and of course, it's in the A F, but it lists each of the significant habitats and it lists the changes that occur. And so this is where the upland forest went from a hundred acres to, I think we impacted seven or eight acres? Eight acres. So that went to ninety-one acres. So, but it changes that for everyone. It only lists the wetland impacts of those areas by the intersection. And so if there are any questions about that, of course, we could bring that up. The member of my staff who did most of these surveys is on the call, if there are any questions that you don't think they would be, but just wanted to have him on the call, Dr. Bridges. And he did this analysis. The next slide, you and Jim, please. So this is really sort of conclusion, and when you think about the reports that were made by the various consultants on the water, the sewer, the traffic, the landscape architectural work, the engineering work, we really sort of one by one have properly engineered and assessed these conditions and really have come up with a project that has minimal impact. And I think it's fair to say, with all, you know, with all seriousness, no significant adverse impacts. And so with that sort of conclusion, I think we should really give Mr. Blakeman the chance to say hello and to talk a little bit about what he's gone through and what we've gone through, and we hope to go next. And so Charles.
Well, I was presenting again, and you know, when I first got this project, I went from a drug rehab place, I said, well, taking this property off a drug rehab place and turning it into something else, it's a no-brainer. Everybody's going to love this. And obviously, you've heard from all of you before me that it's an evolved project. And we went, and as we went along, we listened to the board, we listened to some of the neighbors, we tried to create a project, but you know, like Scott said, Matt just said, little impact is possible for the environment, for the neighborhood. And I think we came up with something great. You could tell from the people that we hired, they've all been really meticulous, top engineers and people in their fields, architects, heritage consultants, water treatment and landscape engineers. And we're trying to create something really special in this town. As we talked about, the adaptive reuse, it's going to cost a fortune to make these buildings by design. Tax credits would never be enough to do that. Part of what this whole condominium project is about is also subsidizing, rebuilding to build and rehab those buildings. It would not happen without those condominiums being sold to subsidize some of this adaptive reuse. So I mean, I know there's a lot of information floating around. I really ask people to really deal with facts as opposed to just rumors and stuff going around, because there's a lot of disinformation. And I've seen it, and I've heard it, and it's very disheartening to me, because I've been doing development in the city and up here for many years, that a lot of great projects, people, you know, a lot of adaptive reuse historic projects. And I, you know, let's talk about what's real and what the facts are and what's really the impact of this thing and not, you know, things that are just being said. And you know, I'm, thank you again. I hopefully, you know, we come to a place where people get satisfied, people understand what's going on, and we move this ahead. It's been over ten years. I was a young man when this all started. Thank you.
Does that conclude your, one more? Okay. So then at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Christian.
Yeah, here you go.
All right, I'm sorry. I apologize. I apologize. At this point, and we're going to hand it over to our engineering consultants from C P L, Andy Lern and Christian Moore.
So my name is Andy Lern. I'm here with Christian Moore. We're with C P L Architects and Engineers and Planners. We are the Planning Board Consultants, Planning Board Civil Engineering Consultants. We're tasked with reviewing projects before the Planning Board for compliance with TECO requirements. Christian has been the engineer that's been reviewing the project since about 2022. So I'm going to turn it over to him to kind of talk about the specifics, issues that we've looked at.
Good evening. My name is Christian Moore. We're with C P L.
We can't hear you.
How about an update?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, I might just need to do that. The review of the materials submitted involved a number of things. We looked at the site layout of roadway, make sure that it conformed with town specifications. We looked at utilities and three principal utilities, water, drainage, and sewer. And those were reviewed to make sure there's adequate separation between them during installation. The water sewer were also reviewed by other agencies, namely Dutch County Health Department, and also Dutch County Water Relations, Water Authority, really involved in maybe taking over the systems. We examined the traffic impacts, as the consultant previously stated. Stormwater, this is probably the single largest review on this particular site. As you may know, any project within New York State that disturbs more than an acre of ground cover needs obtaining coverage under a general permit from the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. And the D E C, they have a whole set of rules and regulations that need to be followed. And the goal of the regulation is to make sure that no adverse off-site impacts occur from a stormwater perspective pertaining to the development. So without getting into too much detail, the applicant prepared a hydraulic model examining the condition in the previous state and assessing what the proposed conditions were there. And they take the numbers and they gauge a difference, and they have to mitigate that difference in heat flow. Additionally, they also need to provide water quality, water production volume, and again, pre-post attenuation of the beat flow for multiple storm frequencies. New York State requires us to look at the one-year, the ten-year, and the one-hundred-year storm events for this. And after numerous back and forth, they've provided a S W I P, which is a Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, which enumerates all the requirements to allow them to obtain coverage under the general permit. Additionally, it involves erosion and sediment control to make sure that during the construction process, there's no adverse impacts of sediment laying runoff into the receiving waters, in which case, in this particular project, mostly weapons. We also examined lighting plans. I think that's pretty much it in terms of a list of utilities that we examined on this project.
Do you have conclusions?
We can't hear you.
Basically, as per the last comment letter that we prepared in December of last year, all the engineering-related comments were addressed to our satisfaction. They still seem to obtain some approvals from external regulatory agencies. But as far as the scope of what C P L was tasked with reviewing, they've addressed them.
Okay, thank you. Jim, I'll turn to you to go over the next step.
Where we are now, we are still obviously in the public hearing process, but we are at the point now where we believe the Planning Board is ready to get into the secret review, which is an element that is obviously necessary for the Z B A to also look forward. So we do, are anticipating, you know, those final review processes to take place this year. So that would include the C P L by the Planning Board, Z B A area variance review and determination, and then a final, we'll come back to the Planning Board for the board's consideration of the actual proposal itself. So if you want to go over the secret process, since we think that's where we're headed next, and that is that, again, the Town Rhinebeck Planning Board declared the agency on the project. It's a type-one project and a resolution dated June fifth, 2017. Since that time, recently, John Lyons from Grant Lyons has recommended and is the path that we're pursuing, that the Planning Board complete the secret review before the Z B A continues their review, so we're not doing two separate secret reviews. The applicant has applied to the Z B A for the variance, and that application has been tabled, awaiting Planning Board review as per plans. So these, the notes on the slide here, you know, these slides will be available, we'll talk about that in a little bit. These are in a memo, in my memo, I should say, that happened since December 2022, just essentially outlining the process, and I'm not going to read all of this. But the Planning Board will continue to undertake a secret review process to discuss and complete part two and three of the secret forms, and those are New York State forms. And then the Z B A will continue their review, and the Z B A's review and consideration of variance applications to the Planning Board, and then move ahead with the final review of the project. These are the forms that we'll be reviewing. I'm sure board members, you remember, need, we've done a couple type ones. What you're seeing on the screen here on the left is the part two, well, first page of part two, several pages, and then the part three. And the way that we handle the secret review process here in the town for the Planning Board, I'm assuming we're going to do again, is to walk through every one of these questions and sub-questions, one by one, and answer them as we go through to decide whether there is no or small impact, or moderate or large impact. And that's how they classify it on the state secret forms. The part three will be a long write-up that I am going to pull together utilizing the information that's been provided, will be reviewed by John and others that will help us talk with the board about the secret review and each of these elements going through. They'll outline the information we have, so the board can make a determination about potential impact. So just to summarize where we are on submissions, the most up-to-date for plan set, plans, and marking this up correctly if I'm wrong, but I believe they were submitted in April 2023, and those are on file with the town and online. The grading construction details, drainage sheets have been updated per C P L, and those were submitted, they're dated November 2023. And then we got an updated secret E A F, part one, submitted in November 2023 as well because of the changes to some of those details listed above. The applicant acknowledged that November 2023 Planning Board meeting, all information is final, and you can find all of it on the town's website listed there. And we just wanted to note that both C P L and Planning for Places acknowledged that the information that has been submitted has been reviewed, and both deem the application to complete and ready for secret review by the town Planning Board. So with that, I think we're kind of wrapped up in the presentation discussion, but I did just want to then, I think, open it up to the Planning Board members to say that, you know, based on all the reviews we've done, the discussions we've had, and the presentation tonight, do you have any final questions you want to ask at this time, details you think need to be discussed, or is there any information that you believe is missing? I know, it's an easy question.
I had something that I thought of, and Mr. Blakeman?
Yeah.
I had mentioned the expense involved in restoring the historic buildings. Was there any, anyone on the team who did any kind of comprehensive conditions assessment of the historic buildings?
Yes, there was engineers.
And did that come with a costing component, or was it just, you know, it needs a roof or ten years?
Yeah, it came with some. I don't think you put numbers to it, but I do many historic renovations, and I'll tell you that it's going to cost a lot of money, particularly buildings. Over the years, conditions have gotten, obviously.
They rarely get better.
Yeah, they rarely get better. And it's, you know, so the more this sits around, the worse conditions get, and this is the nature of these, of the way.
Thank you.
Any other members of the Planning Board? Okay, so I will open it up now to public comment. And first is Kara Kewa. Kara? You're monitoring as people are coming forward, you can use the microphone, identify yourself. It's being recorded, and you want the best quality of it. It's being recorded, and you want the best quality of it.
Hi, yeah, this is, okay, okay. I'm Kara Kewell, 467 Acrohook Road. I'd like to start by just saying thank you to the Planning Board for putting this all together, and thank you for such a comprehensive presentation. I think it's just helpful for a lot of people. I would like to just point out that the reason that this project evolved to where it is today was because of issues that there were with earlier proposed plans, not because of a quest for where we are today. I think there's very, it's clear that there's little, there's not as much opposition to the adaptive reuse portion of this project. We really would like to, you know, understand better what the cost is of the adaptive reuse because, because that is what we are told is driving the need to have all this added density on the unbuilt portion of the property. So I think the one thing that I would like to point out, because I wasn't quite sure whether we were meant to be asking questions of the team, et cetera, this evening, or just, this is a normal public hearing portion where we issue comments. But I think the other point that I would really like to make is, this project looks really well done, but what it fails to contemplate is the impact of the project on the area outside of the property itself. We get the wastewater and the traffic. We live in this area, we enjoy it. The roads, not Acrohook alone, Berber, Lye, Primrose Hill, Haggery Hill, they are the fabric of our community. And it's not to stand here and listen to somebody say, wouldn't it be great if your roads only went from excellent to good? I mean, that's like, that's our treasure, and that's what the comprehensive plan foresaw, the ability to preserve that kind of aspect of our community and our ability to walk and see places and not have to get in a car to go out and see people and do things. So that was not at all what I had first intended to say this evening, but I think that that is what I need to say. We would like to understand the cost better because without that added density, I think there'd be a lot less opposition to the program. And then I think also the wastewater, and also it's that we addressed several things which make it a little bit more clear why we need, why you need a wastewater treatment plant. But it is a huge headache from our standpoint, and probably from the standpoint of the people who will live in the stone barn ultimately, who will have it in their backyard. And so we just want to clarify, I think what I heard tonight is you did a study to see whether septic, normal conventional septic arrangement was feasible. So we'd like to know that that has, we'd like to know on what basis that has been eliminated as a choice for the septic waste water. Thank you.
Thank you, Kara. Mr. Wina, who do you have next?
Hi, I'm David Weiner. Actually, four other people with Kara coordinated our questions to, or our comments in order to save time. So if you don't mind, I'd like to do it in the order that we had in mind. Would that be okay with you for the next four of us to go in the order we have contemplated?
Did those people sign up on?
Yes, they did.
Okay. Then I assume they're in the order here, right?
Yes. Okay, Ms. Langto?
So you're introduced, so you don't want to, I prefer to go in the order that people signed up?
Well, we, I, would it be difficult if the four of us could just go in the order?
So can you confirm for me who they are, please?
Sure. Patricia Langto, Matthew McGuire, myself, and Linda Kagan.
Okay. I'll.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Hi, my name is Peggy Langto. I live at 220 Lye Road. I live right along the Fallsburg Creek. For me, since I heard of this development happening, while parts of it are really impressive, the elephant in the room has been the wastewater treatment plant. I believe that the proposed wastewater plant that would dump processed water into a seasonally dry stream, the Fallsburg Creek, poses a threat to the environment and a threat to the quality of life in the area and in our neighborhood. I have a question. Is the wastewater treatment plant located in the wetland buffer zone? Is that true? So that's a, I'm looking for an answer to that question. It is located within the wetland buffer zone. So I would think that that poses a little bit more of a threat than having it in a non-wetland exposed area. It leads to the question, what redundancy has been built into the wastewater treatment plant? What happens when it fails? What happens when the power goes out? I know our power goes out quite a bit, and I've tried to get a generator running. It doesn't always work. What happens when you can't put power to that wastewater treatment plant? Does the effluent go directly into the Fallsburg, raw effluent? Well, the D E C, D E C and the Speedy's permit provides oversight regarding the sludge and protection from bacterial contamination. The D E C does not protect this stream from all the other chemicals which are sent down the drain, household cleaning chemicals, antibiotics, drugs, acetone, paint, et cetera, PFAS that we hear about in the news. This is our drinking watershed. The Fallsburg Creek feeds all of our wells, so having these chemicals go into the Fallsburg Creek is really, really threatening and really threatens our quality of life. So I have a question for the Planning Board. If this density does go through, and we have 36 households, the waste that is not filtered by the wastewater treatment plant going into our watershed, will you provide some testing? Can you ask that the output of the wastewater treatment plant be tested to make sure that we're not getting PFAS in our drinking water? We're not getting a lot of chemicals put into the watershed? So I'm wondering what analysis has been done regarding the effect on the Fallsburg Creek of microplastics and drugs and chemicals that are not removed from the processed wastewater? And is there any guarantee that the wastewater processing plant will not emit a foul odor? I know we lived here when the smell was pretty bad. So what recourse do we have if it comes back? Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Hello, I'm Matthew McGuire, and I live at the corner of Acrohook Road in Kippsburg. I studied architecture at Cooper Union, so I take a keen interest in the historic buildings in our region. We're especially raised with estates from the Gilded Age. The Star Estate is one of them. The massive scale of that manor house is on par with the nearby Vanderdure Mansion. Cindy Hamilton has already provided us with history, so I won't repeat her. My feeling is that Rockledge Proposal is no value, no value to Rhinebeck. It's not an authentic restoration of the Star Estate. It's a faux restoration. It's the usurpation of a valuable opportunity for Rhinebeck. Subdividing property undermines its historical architectural vision. Again, Cindy Hamilton let us know that Rockledge was built in 1904 to 1906, and it is under the authority of the National Historic Preservation Act of 1966. I want to compare the Rockledge Proposal with two sites that did it right. Rhinebeck's Wildenstein House is an excellent example of Victorian style, started as Italianate in 1852, transformed in 1888 by the Suckley to Queen Anne style. Louis Tiffany designed the interiors, and Wildenstein was further enhanced by the landscape design of Calvert-Bow, who, as we know, was the co-architect of Central Park with Frederick Olmsted. So the landscape of these estates are crucial to the original vision. The Mills Mansion in Stutzberg, you all know it, so I won't go into detail. But here's the thought exercise. Let me propose this. Imagine the Mills Mansion filled with eight condos as the centerpiece of a 28-unit subdivision. I think that's bizarre. That isn't the way the federal government's Department of Interior and New York State's Department of Parks and Recreation and Historical Preservation. That isn't the way they define historical preservation. Here's, these are principles that are New York State espoused. Continue a property in the use for which it was originally intended, or choose no uses that minimize changes to character-defining features. Retain distinguishing qualities and characteristics. Repair existing features, materials, and finishes. If deteriorated, replace in kind. Be authentic. If a feature is missing, use historic documentation to guide replacement. Do not use treatments that damage historic materials. New construction should not destroy nor alter historic character. Additions and new work should be compatible with the historic property. Now, under these principles, the Rockledge Proposal does recognize the things that are obviously inconsistent with historical character, such as the need to demolish the extant dormitory and infirmary. This is all to the good. Cindy Hamilton says that CHCO and National Park Service will review this plan. I feel that if the Rockledge Proposal was challenged to the Department of Interior and the New York State, I don't see how it passes muster. The way the buildings sit in their original landscape would be eclipsed by a commercial real estate opportunity. The current proposal has neither any valuable, value to the citizens of the town, nor to history, because it will have the feeling, if not literally, then in spirit, of a gated community. The proposal would build condos inside the manor house and the stone barn, which would make it public space, excuse me, it would turn it into, turn public space into private space. This is merely a simulacrum of history for the purpose of profit. Of what use is this to the citizens of Rhinebeck? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Oliver Dean. I'm Dave Weiner. I live at 306 Acrohook Road, I think about a quarter of a mile down the road from this proposed project. And I'm going to talk about traffic. For those of you who are new to the Board, I have written, I've sent some written information to you over time. If you look at it, you should start at the end because some of it replaces earlier stuff that I've been very clear to talk about that. Acrohook and nearby roads are windy, hilly roads with limited or no shoulders. I wrote a memo pointing out the various and very many dangerous choke points. As we saw from one of Mr. Blakeman's consultants, you can't put a walk, a pathway along that road because it's too near. Yeah. So none of the traffic studies address the hazards to people using the road who aren't in the car. People use the road for walks. There are people riding horses, bicycles, there are even horses and buggies on that road. As anticipated, as anticipated by R C five designation in the comprehensive plan setting of our area as a world portion of the community, Acrohook and other New York roads are used in the manner just described. The traffic study doesn't address the effect of those uses. There are significant congestion generators being developed at Grassmere and Old Stone Farm, and there is construction of multiple single-family homes in the pipeline. The town is booming, to quote Elizabeth Spence, the hard town supervisor. None of which is accounted for by the developers' traffic studies. An independent traffic study needs to be done, taking account of other planned and expected development, as well as the effect of increased traffic on the safety and quality of life in the area. We believe that the trap, you need to question whether the trap, why the traffic studies don't look at projected increased traffic, not just the current level of traffic. We also think that the, a study that we would like to see done by somebody who's independent looks at whether some of the standards about how absolutely comfortable, how acceptable the traffic levels are that we described here, do those standards really apply to a curvy, hilly rural road with sightlines where people ride their horses? That's the fundamental thing. So, and all we're asking for is some, two, some independent studies for traffic and for particularly the effect on the creek, and also a real analysis of the, what is the appropriate way to address this historic property? In addition, we think of pavement study, in addition, we think of pavement studies to assess whether the structural integrity of the county roads in the area would be harmed by the considerable magnitude of the proposed construction project. Are there any plans to do that? Also, the Board should put controls on the place for construction vehicles, including the roots to assure the quality of life and protection of the roads. And I'd like to know, has that been given, has any thought been given for that? Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Linda Kagan. I live at 373 Acrohook Road. And when I first moved up here, I noticed the abandoned daytop facility, and I was curious, what is going to happen next? And my impression of Rhinebeck and meeting Sally Mazzarella, who, along with Melody, worked very hard in creating, along with 1,000 residents, the 2009 Rhinebeck Comprehensive Plan. And while the plan has not been completely or translated into all of the zoning laws necessary, there are some, there's some areas in which there's less than sufficient clarification, which has not resulted in zoning laws that would protect an area such as the zone around Berber Road, Lye, Acrohook, Primrose, and Haggery Hill. And the result is that there's a bit of a gap, I think, in the zoning that doesn't protect the R C five zone sufficiently to avoid a 36 condominium development to sort of land in this area, which has, and insists apparently on using Acrohook Road instead of Primrose or Haggery Hill, which actually have lines in the middle of road and shoulders so that people, if they are taking a walk with their dog, or riding a bike with their kids, or cyclists, or horseback riders, would have the ability to get out of the way safely. So Acrohook Road is simply not an appropriate way in which to enter this new property or exit it. And the issue regarding significant, I mean, the development's going to take years to put together. Obviously, it's very extensive and certainly well thought out. The problem is, is other The problem is, as someone else mentioned, I think it does be repeating, if the same sort of analysis and reports and investigation was done in the area surrounding the proposed development, to make sure that the environment, the habitats, the ecosystems are not going to be negatively impacted, as Ms. Lacto referenced in great detail regarding the stream and the effluent and all the things that don't get processed by wastewater system. Thirty-six units is probably going to be somewhere around 60 to 75 human beings on Acrohook and even a couple of the other roads surrounding it. I don't think we even approach that number of homes. So, the concentration of this other type of unprocessed toxins that are going to go into Fallsburg Creek is a real concern for all of us, and it should be a concern for Rhinebeck as a whole. Because if this happens, it's going to continue to happen everywhere else, because it's going to, there'll be a green light that is going to shine very brightly on Rhinebeck, that developments in rural areas that were specifically zoned to remain rural, to remain, you know, one house per five acres. And I know, Jim, you mentioned that the zoning allows for all this density and concentration. That has to be balanced with, well, what does it mean for all of us, for Rhinebeck? For the quality of life that, you know, we've already invested, if you just take 50 surrounding homes and the current market value, we've all invested and have a great deal of interest in maintaining the quality and the value of our homes. The surrounding wells that were tested, I believe you mentioned 11 of them, well, my well wasn't tested, my neighbors', the Sherman's well was not tested, I don't believe David's well was tested. What are the impacts on our wells? I mean, that's relevant. And so, the studies can't simply be the proposed development. I mean, it serves itself in terms of the reports that have been provided and funded by the owner, which is how things go. So, I really believe it's the planning board's responsibility to get independent reports, not just on the proposed development, but what's going to happen around it. I mean, you know, there's something called the tragedy of the commons, which is when, the best example is when there's a hill, and everybody, or surrounding, you know, farmers and sheepherders, whatever, use that public land to graze on. Well, once it's overgrazed, it's not growing back. And Fallsburg Creek runs through many properties, eventually it somehow connects or impacts Fly Marsh, or Fly Marsh impacts it. The point is, it's all intermingled. We have to make sure that whatever is put in place, and certainly some development is going to happen, we don't say don't develop, but it should be something along the lines of, you know, 15 to 18 units, something much more manageable. And I don't think it's fair to say that Mr. Blakeman needs to sell more units in order to justify what Matthew explained, Matthew McGuire, was not an appropriate, you know, adaptive use of the historical building. The means don't justify the ends. We need to make sure, and the planning board has a responsibility, to make sure that the surrounding areas that are affected by this development are addressed now. We don't, you know, testing afterwards, once the stream is polluted, it's going to be too late. You can't remediate that. Thank you. The next person on the list, if that includes your group?
Yes, thank you.
The next is Barry Shaw.
Hi. For those of you that do remember me, I was the former highway superintendent for the town of Rhinebeck from 2016 to 2019, December of 2019. And we looked into the ledges a little bit. It was a very precursory look. I don't remember any conclusions that we arrived at. But my concern is, I live on Acrohook Road, my wife and I walk our dog every morning, two and a half miles, excuse me, around Acrohook Road, and it's a very nice road. And we've heard all the technical aspects of the development, and it's very impressive all the considerations that are being made. But again, just to reiterate what everyone else has said as a resident, our concern is for our impact on our life for the surrounding area from this development. Let me just field a question to the planning board. Do you know how many developed parcels are on Acrohook Road right now between Burger Road and Primrose? Anybody?
I do not.
There's 31. This projected increase is 36. So you're effectively increasing the number of residences by over 100%. On an absolute standard, Acrohook Road will always be a low-use road by highway use standards. But on a relative standard, and that's the standard we live on, the residents of that road, you're going to double the traffic on that road, permanent, not just for construction, but permanently. So, right now, there are two choke points on that road, one to the south and one to the north, where a school bus and a car cannot pass side by side. One of them has to stop, the other has to get by, and they have to pass that way to pass safely. It's been that way since I've been here. I've been here 66 years. I grew up here, I spent my whole life here. Nothing has changed about that. What has changed is the density of the population in this area. So, I agree with Linda Kagan and the rest of the commenters that we need to take a look at how the impact is for the residents of this road, not just for the development of Rhinebeck and the tax revenue that Rhinebeck stands to gain from this, but from the impact of the environmental development for all the residents of Acrohook Road. I would be more than happy to meet with anybody who would like to evaluate these choke points that I'm speaking of, the sightlines on Acrohook Road. I'll do it on my own time, I'm retired, and weren't happy to help. But I think these are important safety considerations. Like I said, we walk on the road every day, but we're not the only ones. There are plenty of people that bicycle, ride horses, every day. And we enjoy our environment, and we want to keep it that way. Thank you.
Michael Langto. Good evening. Michael Langto, 220 Fly Road. Something happened recently that reminded me of something that was said at a planning board meeting, when they had the planning board meeting at the Rhinebeck High School cafeteria last year. And what happened was, we got five inches of rain in a very short amount of time, about a month and a half ago. And at that point, the Fallsburg Creek went across Fly Road, went across Acrohook Road, it went across people's lawns, it went through people's gardens, and it became apparent exactly where all the detergents and the people's prescription medications were all they would end up every time the Fallsburg Creek floods. The Fallsburg Creek doesn't always flood. Two summers ago, actually, we had a drought and a dirth, and there was no Fallsburg Creek. I'm a beekeeper, so I'm very, very parent when there's no, when there's no water. So, two summers ago, the Fallsburg Creek didn't run at all for about two months, goes right by my house. And somebody asked Mark Reminski, "Why can't the effluent go into a catch basin?" And he said, "Well, the effluent has to go into a positive runoff, positive outflow." Well, there's times, those two months, that the Fallsburg Creek had no outflow, no positive outflow, so the effluent would have just been basically going on, that would have been the stream, would have been the effluent. And I just don't believe that the old antiquated notion that the solution to pollution is dilution is really a good plan at that point. So, my brother and I, when we were little kids, we played in the Fallsburg Creek all summer long, you know, finding turtles, finding noobs, fish. And I would just like the Fallsburg Creek to be still Fallsburg Creek that other generations of kids can play in and not get sick when they're doing that kind of stuff in. So, thank you very much.
Seth Stamler. That concludes the list of people who have signed in. I would open it up now if there's anyone else with us this evening that wishes to comment. Planning board members, any, I'm sorry. Sure.
I'd just like to make one comment, please.
Seth, please.
My name is Trish Purkroyd, and I live at 278 Acrohook. And getting back to the effluent, we're all concerned about that. Someone made a comment during the presentation that, "Well, don't worry about the effluent, because that was because there was a lot of cooking and a lot of grease, and the grease trap must have overflowed, and that's why we had that horrible smell." But I'm assuming with 36 units, that the people who live in these units aren't going to cook, and they probably will have some grease too. So, you know, the fact that there was a commercial kitchen at DAYTOP doesn't mean that there won't be any grease in the effluent. So, just wanted to point that out, because that seemed pretty stuffy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, good evening. So, just wanted to take the time, thank you all.
May I please?
Sorry, I respond in, it's to Fergie Drive, Rhinebeck. Thank you all, thank you for the presentation, thank you for taking your time on the planning board. I think to my friends and neighbors, incredible job done putting this together, well said, well spoken. I've lived here all my life, I've been raised my family here. I think the concerns that my fellow residents have raised tonight do seek further inquiry, and I really would have pressed upon you to think about these things seriously. Rhinebeck has done a pretty fair well job, growing with the times, but this is one area where I think we need to look a little deeper. The numbers that we're talking about, increasing by 100%, some environmental concerns, just please do your due diligence and make a smart choice for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you much. I could miss your last name, could you, please?
Sure, Monica.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sorry, it's Carol Q. Wells, 467 Acrohook Road.
Good to be like.
So, if I may ask these questions, if you care to answer them. One of the things that was touched on a little bit was the gated community debate. I know it has been said that this is not a gated community, it has a lot of characteristics of a gated community, and I guess I just wanted to understand more about what the security gatehouse function will be on the property, and also how many people will typically be employed, you know, on a daily basis. You've noticed that there's a 23-space parking lot proposed for the dormitory, in addition to all the residential parking. So, that is the very closest point to Acrohook, really, of all of this. That and even the nighttime lighting are probably the most visible portions of the project. So, anything that anybody could comment on, on any of those issues would be really appreciated.
I think, Carol, what we're going to do tonight, you know, obviously, questions have been raised, and I think we'll try to pull all these questions together, and with the opportunity to address them comprehensively, rather than a back-and-forth here.
Okay. And then I just have one last thing, and that is about the water for the irrigation, and also for potentially flushing the septic system, because I did notice in some of the reports, I think, I thought it was WSD's comments, but maybe it was the DEC's comments, that said that if there's not enough flow through the system, that sewer gasses can back up, and that is potentially what caused the smell before, because there was not nearly as much running through that site as it was built for. It was heavily underutilized. And the report suggested perhaps an annual flushing of the system to avoid that. So, to that end, and the irrigation, given all the water on the property and stormwater and things like that, it would be great if you integrated some capture, water capture plans into the program for those uses.
I think you mentioned some solar.
Thank you.
Hi, David Wyner again. I'm not sure if this point was really made very clearly. We're talking about preserving a historic building, but for whom? When that property was abandoned, neighbors walked through and could look at the abandoned building. When this property is restored, it provides no benefit to the residents of Rhinebeck. Thank you.
My name is Wendy Maitland. Thank you for your great presentation. So, full disclosure, I am associated with the project, if it happens. I'm a real estate broker in Rhinebeck. I was born and raised in Rhinebeck, and I completely appreciate the concerns about the property and the neighbors' concerns. What I think would be constructive beyond talking about the fears is really talking about the facts and the factual questions that came up, and also, rather than, you know, fear-based questions or statements. But what I would also, what I wish that there was more of were solutions. I know that it's a historic property, I love architecture, I love history, and I've worked on many restorations, but what is the suggestion, I wonder, from people who don't want to see this happen? That's a rhetorical question, but, you know, it was dilapidated, it was a drug rehab, I don't think the community was really able to enjoy it as the previous use was. So, I hope that there are constructive responses and resolutions, so that people can feel heard and comfortable, and also appreciate all of the effort that has gone in by the entire town board and ownership.
The next person I believe in line here? They came to speak. Yes, please.
My name is Marissa Mahin, I'm at 8 Gipsburg Road. Am I speaking loud enough to get someone to hear me? Okay. I'm sorry, I have to say something about fears. I think something about fears is really what drives all of us. It's either love or fear in every decision you ever make. And if there's a fear that's not addressed... And if there's a fear that's not addressed prior, as people have stated, then it's not going to get addressed later. I don't, I haven't had time to research everything that I wanted to with this project. When we talk about the wastewater treatment plant, the first thing that comes to mind with wastewater treatment plants is Cove Road. And I see Cove Road has a hard time selling those houses. I don't know the history of it, I don't even know where to begin to look into it. But they did something with that wastewater treatment plant, and I don't know why Cove Road can't sell. I've looked at houses, they don't move very quickly. Some of them do, most of them don't. They sit on the market for a while. So, now you have these gorgeous houses, and again, this is, maybe it is rumor, maybe it's speculation, but the wastewater treatment plant is something there, right on the Hudson River, that seems problematic. Other things that I see, and I love the fact that our neighbors mentioned, this is a historical landmark area that will be basically cut off. I don't see people walking through it. It doesn't have a warm welcome, like, "Hey, come on in, we're part of your neighborhood." And to me, that's detrimental. We're losing a historic part of Rhinebeck to private. And we're funding that, and it seems as though we're giving up a little bit of what makes Rhinebeck Rhinebeck. And I'm not saying that we shouldn't change. I do want to see that property utilized. It's a beautiful piece of property. It was also zoned, and we're not talking like 50, 70 years ago. It was zoned in 2009 as RC5. What were the considerations that went into the RC5 that all of us in this same neighborhood have to abide by for our houses? And why was it made RC5 then? To the... I would love to welcome more people to our neighborhood. I think it's one of the coolest things about our areas, that we all go out, we all walk. I don't know people, I know them as the parents of their dogs. And that's because you get the dog's names, right? That's in the neighborhood we live in. That's a fun place to be in, that's a fun place to grow up. We have a two-year-old, and every time we go for a walk, we stop at Fallsburg Creek on Matthew's property, stroll on there, and we try and look for fish and tadpoles and everything else. That's the really cool thing about this area. It is rural, it is country, it is a place where people want to be. It's just overloading it, and some of the presentations, ones that mention the increase in cars, you're putting in two-car garages, really cool feature, and then saying, "There's only 36 more cars." Well, no, that's 72 more cars. And the additional 32. So, that seemed, I don't want to say manipulative, but it doesn't seem an accurate reflection. So, when we start doing studies on the increase of the neighborhood, all aspects need to be included into it. You can't say you're going to put really cool two-car garages in and then only say there's 36 new other cars. You already admitted that there's 72, and it just doesn't seem transparent. And I have concerns with that. I love the...
I'm just going to remind people about the time. I'm also going to remind you that if a comment has already been made, please don't feel the need to tell us again. We've heard, all of you will continue to hear you until you've exhausted new comments. So, please just bear that in mind as you're choosing to come up. One of the other points where my neighbors and I are concerned about is the scoping sessions and...
Mayne?
My name remains, Linda Kagan. You want to understand the scoping session and how that's going to take place and what sort of involvement or participation the public is going to be able to contribute to that?
It hasn't been determined yet whether there will be a scoping session.
I thought that was required under regulations.
Scoping, whether there's scoping will depend on whether the first decision point in the environmental review for the planning board will be to make a determination of significance. That's the first decision point. And that, if there's a negative declaration, meaning that the board has decided that there are no significant adverse environmental impacts from this action, then the state environmental review will be concluded, and then the board will move on to the site plan and special use permit review portions and subdivision portions of this project under the zoning law. If there's a positive declaration by the board, meaning that the board has identified potential significant adverse environmental impacts that require further study, then in that instance, there'll be a scoping session. The purpose of the scoping session is to set forth what's essentially the table of contents for an environmental impact study. And so, it won't be determined whether there's going to be a scoping session until after, until the board makes its determination of significance. There's, you know, there's a secret handbook that the DEC publishes that's available to everybody online, and, you know, I'm trying to give you a quick explanation tonight, but there's a further explanation of those same principles in the secret handbook.
Well, at this point in time, what reports or studies has the board funded? Or, like, what are you relying upon to come up with that determination? Because I've spoken to people who've been on this planning board before and headed it, and don't understand the idea that there would not be a scoping session.
Well, the scoping, we're following, so, the state, the environmental review that's being conducted by the planning board is being conducted pursuant to the state environmental quality review act. That's the acronym SEACER that's been mentioned here.
No, I understand that, but what reports are you using to make that determination? Are there reports that were funded by the developer?
The board will be using all of the materials that have been submitted by the developer. They'll be utilizing the material that's been created by their own consultants that have been hired to review the reports from the applicant, and it'll also be relying upon any information that's submitted by the public.
Well, that...
And also comments from other governmental leaders.
Right. So, the last Huckle Lake Hudsonia report, isn't that from 2007? If that's something you're going to rely on, and if the consultants are just going to read what the developers paid consultants presented, it seems like a very small circle of very limited information. And again, you know, the Green Amendment, which was adopted by New York, and I think there are only two other states that have adopted the Green Amendment. We're entitled to fresh water and a clean environment, and if the determining, if it's not even going to be a scoping session to include all of our homes and properties and the areas that are going to be affected by this very significant proposed development, then I think that the planning board is going to be in a tough position to defend a determination that would allow the building without going through all of these, you know, obviously, I've looked at the secret handbook, and from my reading, and again, people who are much more experienced in planning board, in this planning board, in fact, say that there's no way, that there can't be a scoping session.
That's not true.
Okay, well, we'll agree to disagree.
But we're, there's no disagreement. You can look at the procedures that are set forth. What this board is doing is, we are following step by step the procedures for environmental review that are set forth pursuant to the state environmental quality review act. That's what we're doing.
I understand that.
And whether there's, whether a scoping session is required is a question that is not determined at the point that we're at in the process right now.
Right. Well, as we've all discussed today, there are larger issues, and I really impress upon you to have a scoping session that enables us to take part in that process.
The board will have a scoping session, there's a positive declaration, there's also apt to be additional public comment. The board, we're very grateful for the comment that has been submitted by the public tonight. I would encourage everybody who's commented to please, if you have detailed comments that don't fit into four minutes, the board would very much appreciate written submissions. They can be sent in to Gretchen at any time. Everything that is submitted from the public will be considered seriously and will be reviewed and will be part of the decision process.
If it's a new comment? If it hasn't already been offered?
My name is Kelly Shroff. I live at 323 Acrohook Road. I've lived there for 34 years, and I take issue with someone saying that when Daytop was there, no one enjoyed it. I was allowed to walk on that property. I walked my dogs through there. I walked my son down there. We went down there and played. We never had an issue with anybody that was ever in Daytop. You didn't live on Acrohook Road when Daytop was there, so for you to say that it's nothing and that what they're doing is better. The other thing is, I am wondering, what are you going to use those dormitories for? If you have condominiums, what do you need dormitories for?
Oh, that's doing storage.
You're going to use it for what? I don't understand that.
Storage.
I believe, I believe that they referenced it in their presentation.
And they need 23 parking spaces for that?
I would, let me just, in answer to some of your questions, and other people may have the same, for the sake of clarity, I just wanted to remind everybody that this meeting this evening has been filmed. It will be available. It's a long meeting, it's a complicated meeting, so we're going to give Gretchen a few days to get this package. You will be able to go back and look for some of these questions that, you know, there is just a tremendous amount of...
Oh, I don't think anybody said anything about the 23 parking spaces. I don't think that was answered.
I thought I recalled a reference to the use of the dormitory building.
As storage.
I just, I'm not going to, I'm not going to say what they said. What I'm saying is, it will be available comfortably, and you will be able to sit in the comfort of your own home and re-watch it. As John said, you have opportunities to submit other comments in writing. So, we just need to give Gretchen a little grace period here to pull us all together. We're hopeful that it will all be available and up by the end of the week, but if I err on that, please forgive us, because we'll work through a lot of this material to try and get to the point where it can be reviewed again by people interested in the details.
Can I also ask, in that, what I can look at, will I be able to find out what 11 wells were tested, because there's only 31 houses on Acrohook Road? And I know most of the people, and none of them know anything about wells being tested.
I would, I would bet, I will bet that as we compile all of the questions that have been raised this evening and look for answers, I would be confident in saying that I believe that the applicant would have detailed information about what wells were tested, what outreach went into identifying the families that agreed to have their well tested. So, I'm sure that documentation is available and can be made. Thank you very much.
If you have trouble finding anything later on, you can ask Gretchen, and she'll help you locate it.
I just want to mention, the minutes usually are about two weeks to be available. Once they're approved, the next meeting. Videos, that's on Panda, depends on how fast they get it to me, and how fast, that'll be up on the site. Any presentation materials tonight, I'll put up in the next few days.
And just to reconfirm what Gretchen's saying, minutes have to be approved by us at the subsequent meeting. So, they aren't approved minutes until our next full meeting. And what else?
You're almost afraid to ask that question, aren't you?
But I keep asking it, don't I? I keep asking, because I like to say, what we had tonight is a public hearing. And I like to put the emphasis on the word "hearing." We're here to listen. It's important for all of us. As I said, many people, I think, sitting up here at this particular moment, I may be the only person who has had the pleasure of all of these years with this application. So, I know it's a lot to digest, I know it's a lot to look at. I really want to thank, I want to start with thanking all of the people who worked on the presentations this evening. The applicant's team, CPL, Jim, and others. It's a lot to look at, it's a long history, it's an evolving history. I think it's very beneficial to all of us to have all that in one place, so that we know exactly what's transpired over all these years. I want to thank my fellow planning board members for sitting here patiently. I hope it was enlightening. And I want to thank you, the public, for your constant interest in this project, for your interest in the work of the planning board. You may not always believe it, but you help us do a better job by asking questions. If we're guided by the law, I would remind you of that. We do not get to make decisions based on what we like or what we don't like. We do our very best, and we work very hard at it, but you help us keep focused. So, I really appreciate your interest, the time you've put into it, the patience with the process. And now, if there's nothing else, I would ask someone to make a motion to continue the public hearing, and we have a choice, I believe, of going to March 4th or April 1st. If there is any ideas or recommendations coming from the applicant's team, give us an idea of what you'd like to see happen.
Discussion with the board, obviously, we get time to kind of test the agreement. Obviously, we're looking for that 4th December...
I have no problem with...
Move to continue the public hearing to March 4th.
Yeah, I have a second. Second, almost in favor? I have extension. I'm just reminding everybody, if any board members have a tumble, you have everything to look at, and you will have to, if you have comments.
Yeah, we'll just check out. Public hearing's at 6:05.
There's wonderful sidewalk out there, you can continue the conversation there. All right, folks, I'd like to resume the meeting. So, if you are, you should continue the conversation about Rockledge. Could I ask you to take your conversation out of the hall? All right, to wrap up this evening, we have three ZBA referrals. I want to turn that over to Jim. They are case number 1053 Wireless Edge, Ruby Site. Let me note that Edna has come back to the table and rejoined us. Could someone close that door, please? Second is case number 1054 Shawna Berry, 373 Mill Road. And the third is case 1055 Marie Lauree Shawna, 426 Crimros Hill Road. And then, I would remind you, we just have to briefly about the fair ground topic.
Thank you. All right. First off is Wireless Edge on the Ruby Site, Route 9G. As everyone knows, we have been reviewing proposal for a Wireless Edge Tower on 9G, north of Middle Road, I guess. We had the last planning board meeting, but before that, we had a conversation with the applicant about looking at moving to the Ruby Site, just being more desirable, even though, the conversation at that time, the applicant didn't acknowledge that it resulted in a higher tower. The board took straw poll and said that they thought, you guys have luck. That is the place to look at and see what could be done. So, the applicant did go to the Ruby Site, is looking to ZBA for a height variance to a 200-foot brown monopole, support the antennas for Verizon Wireless, as well as other co-location space for carriers and emergency equipment in the ORP zoning district on the Ruby's former stamp property. Location is being considered based on direction from the planning board. The proposal for the 200-foot monopole is about 50 feet higher than the tower that was previously reviewed by you on the middle road, across the middle road site. The actual variance required will be determined based on the tree canopy height and the tower height above the ground level. I didn't have the exact number, but it is going to be a substantial request.
Can I just add something?
Yes, please.
We decided that we're going off of the, the way that it's written is if it's camouflage based off the canopy height, otherwise, based off whatever the building height is, which is 35 feet. We have kind of looked at different ways that this can be measured, but the applicant has asked to consider the 35 to be a paper, and I tend to agree with that as well. Because again, it's not really camouflage as the last location was proposed to be with the phone branches. So, it won't be a significant variance based, 35 versus what I think it can be 70 or something like that.
So, it's 165 foot variance versus what would have been 140 or something like that variance. So, it is a substantial variance, but we all knew that that would be the case both here and actually at the other site. So, here's going to be about 165 foot variance. So, I just noted in my notes that, you know, the planning board review of this project is not complete, but the location of the tower and associated infrastructure, including the fence and the canopies, is proposed on the site. It would be less visible from the proposal. And then, the proposal on the 9G Tower north of Middle Road. The town board did rezone the ORP district specifically to permit telecommunications towers, as it was viewed as preferable location for the equipment to provide cellular connectivity. It was generally agreed by pretty much everyone to engage in these discussions that it is a desperately needed thing in that part of town. We do need cell service. So, that rezoning took place. This location only required gravel access road from the existing internal road on the Ruby property, whereas the 9G property north of Middle Road would have required a new driveway cut out of Route 9G. Based on the review of the project and those elements, as well as the information we have about the variance of height, our recommendation for referral back to the ZBA for Wireless Edge is that the board finds that the variance will provide for significantly higher monopole than what is committed by code. Is consistent with the planning board and town's desire to place the telecommunications equipment in that area within the ORP zoning district. Acknowledging that through the straw poll, board members conducted at the November meeting overwhelmingly agree the ORP is a more suitable location for potential telecommunications tower, and that the other proposal before the planning board, okay, is a more suitable location than the other location for the planning board. Finding the basic information submitted, the location and height of the 200-foot brown monopole in this ORP zoning district is preferable to the other proposed 150-foot tower that had more visibility in the RCP zoning district. As such, the application height variance raises fewer planning environmental concerns since generally viewed as a preferable location. And then recommending the ZBA will rely upon its own study of the facts and deciding the application in accordance with chapter 125 and the rules of the nerves. Kind of acknowledging where we've been and how we got to this point, but letting the ZBA know what they're considering.
Why do we say at the end that we suggest that they rely on their own? I mean, we're going through this entire thing, saying that we believe that the Ruby Site is the better site, and it requires a higher tower, and for that reason, we think that's, you know, the best, the best solution essentially. Then why do we say they should rely on their own? I don't understand.
You can certainly, if the board wants to put in more stronger language, you can certainly do that. That is kind of a statement we make when there are no issues. The board doesn't see any issues with the project per se, so ZBA can use their own determination. But if you want to have a stronger approval or something to that effect, you absolutely can do that. The recommendation comes from you. This is just my first shot at it.
Do you have a suggestion?
I'm sorry, I for one, think that 200 feet is too tall. I think it's, I think they're overbuilding for the need. And I, when we talked about this before, my understanding was that they were going to come back at us with more of the technical details that were in that first proposal, as far as the coverage area and, you know, the cones of reception and that sort of thing. And also, the visibility study that was done with the crane. I wasn't able to get over there between 10 and 12 on Monday. So, I don't know if that data needs to come in before we make this kind of a statement. You know, I just want to endorse, oh yeah, 200 feet on the Ruby's, but, you know, let's go. I don't want them to get the wrong idea.
Right, that's what I said. General agreement, I think, to looking at the Ruby Site. I don't think there's unanimous agreement in our discussion with straw poll. I'm not sure what you're thinking, Melody, but the.
Is this the new location? Have they, do we have a full application on that?
It'll be on the 20th.
That's right.
Yeah.
Can I make a recommendation, if the board is concerned about some of that data? Gretchen, you can correct me for more. They should be on for public hearing in February for the ZBA, right? You'd like to maybe wait until you have that information to formalize your thoughts?
Oh, I think that's an excellent idea.
I would just, I would just suggest you just, if Gretchen or Jim could just write up a quick referral saying it was discussed at tonight's meeting. We expect to have some more data come in by the February 20th meeting. We'll give you a referral. And Gretchen, if you wouldn't.
I mean, I'll just turn it around to us.
I know it's a day between, but if you could just.
That's an easy one.
But that way, we just make sure we do have that data, and we, because the ZBA really does appreciate your concerns and your referral review. So, if you think you need more data, we're not, you know, it won't, it's going to be public hearing.
It's not going to hold up the process at all.
Yeah, because we need, you know, we need another month after the public hearing to draft the resolution, or maybe continue public hearing. You know, we'll have to see what happens. So, just to let you know where the ZBA is, is that it won't be closing on February 20, 21st, whatever that's. Whatever February is being, yeah. So, if you'd like to have more time, ZBA would appreciate a more thorough response if you can provide.
And that's good to know. This is one of the issues. We don't really regularly run into it, but allowing applicants to do ZBA simultaneously with the planning board application, sometimes things can get ahead of you, especially if they're a little more complicated and more data-driven. This is one of those examples, so I'm excited you guys are here. So, yeah, we can definitely, you know, put this off and wait till we get the additional information. But, we aren't going to have refused, John, if I'm mistaken, John, from our consultant and visualization consultant by the time we probably want to get some of the ZBA as a referral.
Yeah. I mean, the ZBA can't make a determination until the seeker's gotten to a point that that's allowed. So, yeah, and when the application comes in, we will be, you know, talking to George and Ron Graef again.
At the other site, as I remember, one of the last studies that was requested was by one of our consultants, was the coverage data at lower heights, right? So, the same kind of information would be valuable for this site. And one of the reasons it's 200 feet is because it's lower, which suggests it would be no more visible than the other, the other one at the other site.
That's correct. I think the drop in elevation is about 40 feet from one site to the other ground elevation is about 40 feet. So, the net difference is, yes, and it's all continued up in terms of overall.
I don't mean to speak on behalf of the applicant. They were in front of the ZBA in January. I think they did address that. So, hopefully, in February, they'll address that in front of the board too. But if they don't, certainly.
So, we have additional data, obviously, that's going to be coming in. Some with the application, some with consultants following the receipt of the application. So, is everybody content to rewrite the recommendation here to say that we don't have enough data at this time to make a response to the referral from the zoning board?
Yeah, and just, what's the status of the shot clock that he was mentioning?
The extended that is, I believe, to March.
Eighteenth.
March 18th.
So, that's when the shot clock is up, or that's when it starts?
John and Kim taking care of that. We've had a lot of conversations about this. Our plan with John is to make sure.
It is, it is, my understanding, to summarize a little bit, is that this is just part of the process and can be extended, and there are reasons why it can be easily extended. And I understand that it's in the best interest of the applicant at this time to allow us the time we need to do a proper review. So, I don't think, it sounds rather dramatic, but I don't think it has the impact that it puts down.
And also, the shot clock is a rebuttable presumption. So, the idea is, the idea behind the shot clock was to avoid having boards drag their feet just to sort of.
Drag their feet.
Yeah, for the sake of, and, and so, if you're able, you, the shot clock deadlines are, the law presumes that you should be able to complete the review within that deadline. But if you can't, but you were able to show that you diligently pursued the, your review, then you're going to be okay.
Okay. And at this point, we really don't have much to review, so the clock hasn't started.
The clock doesn't start until Gretchen gets an athlete.
They were, as you remember, they were in before, just let us know that they were looking at this other site in previous board meetings. I do think they said they got better coverage for the 200-foot hole in certain areas of the covered area, but, yeah, we don't have an actual application yet.
Okay. Right, there was also, there was another application in town of Red Hook that was withdrawn, and then it resurfaced again at a lower altitude on a different site nearby, a little bit closer to the bowling alley, I think.
It's going to be behind the bowling alley, I understand.
Yeah, okay. So, and that might, that might pick up some of the volume from the traffic coming over the bridge, and, you know, I don't know what.
It's a different carrier.
What the landscape looks like.
Different carrier.
But they do co-locate. And that's actually, I think that's a requirement of the law, is that they need to.
There is. And there'll be space to co-locate on the, I'm expecting space to be on the tower, because there were five, there were five spots, so there was places for tenants on the land property proposal. But it's, there's no guarantee, you know, you can't force carriers to go on one tower versus another. So, it'll probably more be, be more of a race to see who gets their approval first, at least between the two projects.
Right. We are aware of the other projects.
Yeah.
So, I know, Melody, you just asked a motion for the referral to say that you don't have enough information. If you could just, if you wouldn't mind elaborating that if you plan on getting more information, you will provide a further supplemental response, just so the ZBA knows that a supplemental.
Would you like to tell me what I want to say?
I would just say that at this time, the planning board doesn't have an application in front of it, and we would like to defer.
Comment.
Comment until after the February 20th meeting.
Can I have that motion, please?
So.
Second. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Case 1054 Shawna Berry, 373 Mill Road.
Here, the applicant is applying for an area variance for the location of a pool in front of the principal structure, a variance of six inches for intrusion in the front yard, and a variance of 31 feet, five inches for intrusion into the required side yard in the RE10 zoning district. I can bring this one up on the screen. This one, I think, does require. That's, okay. Sorry, I was under my, I shouldn't have moved. So, this is the property that we were talking about, old by Shawna Berry. It's on Mill Road. It's 5.6 acre lot. This is the house. Back up in here, there is a garage here. As you can see, the site is very heavily treeed. So. So, I said in my memo that while it appears there's more than adequate room to place a pool behind the house, because the front setback line, we are in the RE10, it's got a pretty big one. The front setback line essentially follows the parcel, right? So, it's a pretty big setback in front of the house. And while it appears there's more than adequate room to place a pool behind the existing principal structure, given the parcel's 5.6 acres, the review here, the imagery appears to show a much denser tree canopy behind the house, in an area that would be outside the front yard setback, which would appear to result in a greater amount of tree removal than is likely required in the proposed locations. And the pool is proposed. If you look back in here behind it, the trees are, seem to be quite a bit denser here. They do thin out a little, but they're denser here as well. So, I think it kind of is a pretty dense tree area here. And this would be, you know, behind the house. Their proposal is actually to put the pool up here in front of the house, between the house and Mill Road, in this area.
It's a hill there.
What's that?
No.
No, it's very visible from Mill Road.
Oh, yeah.
I'm getting that. So, that said, the pool in the front yard of the property is not seemingly consistent with the general character of the area. We believe the pool will be quite visible from Mill Road, which is, which is a scenic road. And based on the RCP review of the project, we provided the following for a response, which was conditioned and highlighted because I have to go over a couple of other issues and items to discuss. But I believe that what they're proposing to do does raise planning environmental concerns for the construction of a pool in front of the house. The location is likely to be visible from Mill Road, which is a scenic road, and the installation appears to require the removal of larger trees, even though it is a thinner area of trees. There are some apparently very large trees here that I think would have to be removed. Finds the developed locations on the site, it may be the one that's least environmentally destructive to place a pool, given the tree density, but it's still the likely result of removal of larger trees. As such, the applicant should be required to do a tree survey to address issues related to their removal. This is on section 12555D, related to preservation of trees over six inch BBH, among others. And 12555D is a section of the code of the preservation of scenic features, just so you know. And then, the question that I had is, what do you want to do for a recommendation? Do you have comments? Are you concerned? Do you feel it has environmental constraints and issues the way that I did, or would you like to respond back in another way? I wasn't sure where the board would land.
Is this ever going to come before the planning board, or is this strictly a area?
I don't believe this will come up in the planning board. Well, it's on scenic road.
Within a thousand, within a thousand feet of the river, it's respectable, you would.
I don't think that that is their long.
When it came for the hot tub, they didn't go for plan.
It is.
It was the same scenario.
But it is on scenic road, it's a scenic road.
What you hear what Sharon thinks, and she lives right on the road and knows the spot.
Yeah, I was just wondering whether Lance and Kill was in reference to it. Yeah, it's just as you pass the East Gate Road, you look at a very short hill, along the hill, and you go down the hill, around the turn, and that's where the basway is, and it's all wooded. The house sits back in there, remember when it was built, perhaps, I can't remember the guy's name, but he was the principal in school. It's just all trees compared to the house now to the south of it, they've taken down a lot of the trees.
So would it be your recommendation that the planning board would want to ask the ZBAA to look carefully at those issues?
I would, I would take what Jim has written here and what it did and put them in a recommendation to the ZBAA.
Sharon, you're not sure of this?
No, I'm sorry. I forgot. I apologize.
You can't have that.
I know, I'm...
Take your comments here, well, you know, one and two plus three and send that to the ZBAA because they're important. You know, all your comments are very important to this property. It's such a, it's difficult around that turn, and there's a pool in the way there, it's kind of weird.
It, it comes back to something I'd say to the planner that I wouldn't put in a referral response, so, but sometimes you can't put everything you want on every property.
Exactly, yeah.
Somehow it comes down to that.
Why wouldn't you put that in the comment? Because the thing is, the zoning board of appeals normally doesn't have the benefit of a planner's advice. I mean, you may not use those words, but I think anything along those lines that coming from your area of expertise would be something that would be appreciated by the board.
So adding something effective, not every site is necessarily...
Careful with that.
For most, probably, for all the potential...
Were there any concerns, Jim, about the excavation that would be required and possible fill? Did you say there's a slope there?
It's a hill. I mean, it's not a big hill, but it's...
It's going to be not just the pool, it's going to be the pool and the fence and the pool house with the mechanicals, I mean, it...
Yeah.
It's hard to do that. Writing view of the road, you know, it doesn't seem a good plan.
I know it's only a pool, but if it was before the planning board, it sounds like the kind of project that you'd be thinking about asking for a simulation before you saw it.
I didn't talk to Brian, it's not a scenic road, if you can tell me before us. I didn't talk to him, it's a...
One of the questions I was wondering is, were they not putting it behind the house to hopefully not have to go in front of, would they, they put it behind the house? Would they have to go in front of it anymore?
There's a hot tub in back of the house, so that's, and then I think they, I think they, I think if you put this hot tub scene up on, I think there's a lot of hills.
It's a lot of hills.
And, and the wooded property. I believe, did, they, they did provide renderings in the ZBAA application, so you should have them. And I, it's, from the rendering, it looked, just, just as a comment, I'm not, you know, we want the planning board to get as independent referral as they can, but I found it from their application that they were trying to build it without taking too much of the bill away. That was how they had presented it to the ZBAA.
Well, that could be something that you could ask for additional information on in terms of your study of the facts. I, I think it's fair to say that these questions have been raised this evening, including the ones that Jim has raised and the additional comment that, that, you know, it's okay to say we don't quite think it's appropriate or suitable, and, and ask you to consider that.
Yeah, of course. I just wanted to state that they had provided renderings, there was a question back.
They did, I didn't really think that necessarily showed the discussion I'm having right now, because it's so close up of, you know...
Yeah, it does show the...
The impact that it's going to have.
Yeah, yeah.
It does show what they're proposing to do, but if you just look for me, you'd never know, I don't think, you know, what it might look like.
To be completely, not just from my personal, it's that personal opinion, I, I'm not really comfortable saying we recommend or don't recommend it based on the limited information we have, including saying, like, not every property is appropriate for it, because we don't have enough information to even state that this property isn't appropriate for it.
I could say may.
Maybe, may, I mean, my preference is it comes before us, so that we can be like, visit the property, why is it placed there? Maybe it is the best spot, maybe landscaping does the trick. It's just so hard to give a proper opinion without information.
Well, we can have our response to the referral reflect all, yeah.
I, I think the, just having been at ZBAA means, I, I think your comments are coming from a good place. I, what I wanted to say is, the planning, the ZBAA, they just love getting another set of eyes.
Yeah.
Especially from the planning board, who has a lot of experience with looking at many different kinds of applications. So any, any advice that you can pass along to the ZBAA, every drop of that is appreciated.
Are you ready? Who's ready?
I'm going to have to work this one up with you, if that's okay. Say something effective.
Have we covered all of them?
Can you, must the hell involve us?
I think it has to be... Not unless they're required to.
We want to check up on the...
I think I have to, because the scenic road, I have to check with Brian tomorrow. I didn't catch that one.
In the meantime, we've covered the point, so I think everybody's satisfied with the direction we're going here? All right, I'm not going to try and say what he's going to write. You're going to have to...
Dr. Sador.
It's still...
I'm trying to get through it as fast as I can.
Come on, come on.
This is still early, if I don't leave.
All right, I, I need some kind of motion, and, so it might be a motion to authorize Jim to write a response that takes into consideration all the comments that have been offered here from various planning board members. Is that acceptable? And I could take that motion, and then the second? Someone, please?
Someone.
Motion by Sharon, second by Elise, all those in favor?
Aye.
Post extension, thank you. That brings us to the last piece, 1055 Marie Laure, Chandonmont, from 426 Primrose Hill Road.
This, this one, everyone has... It was pre-armed, sorry. You haven't seen this. What happened to the easy ones?
You didn't give us any easy ones.
This was our last one, so...
Yeah, thank you for sharing. Thank you for sharing, yes. But did you have to give them to us? Well, while you're looking, maybe I can just jump ahead to what the last piece of business would be, which would be the fairgrounds, while Jim is getting acclimated here. The Duchess County Agricultural Society, I believe you received notice of this, is before the village planning board to replace what is currently the entrance to the fairgrounds through the 4-H Hill, which comes in about where the milkshake booth is, for any of you who are familiar with the fairgrounds. The purpose of the new construction and work that's going to take place within the village is to make it better handicapped accessible, to be able to create some scanning areas there for security. Their application is before the village. We were contacted by Ryan Dab to see if we, as the adjacent property owner, we, the town, have any concerns or comments that we wish to bring forward. I did contact Mr. Imparati, who is the director of the fairgrounds, executive officer, and none of the proposals that are before the village will have any impact on property within the town. So it is not changing entrance from the road, there's not going to be any, any change whatsoever to town, the area on the fairgrounds, they're just within the town. So the question is, do you have any comments that we wish to offer the village on the light in this application?
Are they going to put in a bike rack? Because that's where I ride my bike to get into the fairground.
Well, if you would like to pass that comment on, you would have recommendation.
This is the North Parsonage entrance to the fairgrounds?
No, you have to come onto the fairgrounds through the main entrance off Route 9.
Okay.
You go all the way around the back and you come in on livestock pit.
It's an internal gateway.
It's an internal gateway, there's not a Route 9. It is, do you know where the, all of the...
The 4-H stuff?
Yes.
Yeah, 4-H gate, that, that's, if you go down North Parsonage, there's a gate there, and there are horse barns and they...
No, that is, that is not...
It's the milkshake stuff.
That is not...
No, it's right behind the crack on that. We don't eat milkshakes. You're talking about the one right there, it's actually back.
Yeah.
Okay, and where is this one that they're talking about?
It's going to be way north.
Yeah.
It's off to the right there.
Keep going.
Fairground service room?
Yeah.
It's right...
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I got it.
I think it's actually a little closer to what Melody is looking for.
I, I think it's almost...
No, no, no.
No, 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 right there. It's really, if you see the...
We can see the milkshake.
You can see, do your, do your arrow over and right to...
It's for the car show, it's where the sale lot is, for the old cars that they, people bring out on trailers.
It's going to be right there.
I think one of these are some in my way.
It's right there.
I haven't, okay. He stood more time.
And it's very, so what I'm saying is, all of the roads that you're seeing on here now are all, all in the village.
They're all in the village. Yeah, and, oh yeah, the towns, the towns are over there, yep. Okay.
Thank you, Greg. Well, I don't think...
Would you profit against what that is?
I believe that the plan that's before the village calls for the introduction of new trees to replace the ones that are coming down, that's what I've told. Any, any wishes to present comments to the board? Okay, all right, back to Jim.
Thank you for buying me some time before everybody, tearing my head off, I'm going to stay here, I wonder. So, the third application before us is an applicant who's proposing to add a 10 by 13 foot addition to an existing garage to be a bathroom, and in addition, for additional external access storage room to the, it's a 30 by 41 foot garage in the RC5 zoning district. What they're proposing to do is convert the existing garage and workshop into a one-bedroom accessory dwelling unit, that would have a separate board of health approved septic system and put this addition on there. The relief that they're requesting is a variance, because the structure's closer to the fronting street than the principal structure, which is one we regularly see. A variance is also needed because the total square footage of roofed accessory structures is over the 1,500 square feet permitted, and they need a variance because the proposed converted dwelling will be 1,266 square feet when the maximum permitted is 900 square feet. With all of that, Kim, John, you can jump in, I think that you guys were in there.
No.
The shot clock been before you went for the...
Yes, yeah, they did, they did.
They're also sort of...
Was it pre-con?
I think we've only seen them in pre-con.
I wasn't sure if they were in front of you, I can't, I don't have...
On the 20th.
They are in front. Or is it, is it for the number of accessory structures?
They had to work that out.
Right, so that's what I was going to talk about. So we saw them for pre-con, and in the discussions, we realized that these submissions that came in from the architect, it shows, you know, this is the addition for the bathroom here, and this is another roofed area that will be over, I forget if it was pool mechanicals or something else, that's being added on. This was the layout that they had, and it had a door going into this additional space. In the conversations we had, we found that this architect's rendering does not conform with what's on the site plan, because there's no additional space here. So the actual variance that they need for roofed accessory structure, Brian and I found, is actually going to be slightly more than what is in the application to you guys, which I think they brought up, should have brought up for you with the ZBAA meeting.
I, I don't have my notes on it.
If not, right, if not, we'll have to double check that, but...
Actually, I believe they did, yeah. I did, I don't have this one in front of me.
It was a, it was a small increase, but this is still part of the new...
I think I do remember Mark talking about it.
So there's some inconsistencies in the material that we've been able to review, but Mark, Mark said that he would take care of all of that and get it all taken care of. Site plan special use permit is required for having more than three roof structures on the property and converting the garage to accessory dwelling unit. We did raise these issues of inconsistencies in the material. We also discussed the fact that, as proposed here, I think that this could easily be considered a two-bedroom unit. This could be one, this could be the other. This is the one that proposes bedroom, this is proposed to remain as a workshop. This is a door that goes in, this is an existing garage door, this is an existing garage door. This is the proposal for what they would replace, this one as a garage door. So I believe in the conversation, we'll have to see what comes in, the discussion was that this would get walled off, and that these would be separates, and so that would be a separate workshop area, not accessible to this, which would then not make it really feasible to be a bedroom. However, the planning board is empowered and has to look at this and make your own decisions to whether or not you think something can be a bedroom or not. That has a direct impact on the water and wastewater, the septic system they have to install. So if they have to do a two-bedroom septic, it'll be allowed to be benefited from a one-bedroom.
They did cement with a wall.
They did fill the wall, okay. So they're putting a wall in here to try and cut this off, so that it would then just be a one-bedroom with a living room. In case you, I guess that whatever here, another bathroom here, this would then be a separate workshop with its own garage and house. So with all of that, my draft response was that the variances, the variances themselves raise no planning or environmental concerns for conversion of the existing garage with accessory structure. We request the ZBAA ensure that all application materials are consistent, so the variance totals can be confirmed as accurate, particularly the total roof structures that are on the site and the total roof structure that will be, will be built. And then recommend the ZBAA rely, rely upon its own study of the facts in deciding application. But, I mean, this is a pretty typical variance that we see, so I don't know that there are[1724.75]